Order the county council meeting on March 10th at 7:30. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Alder Rodafrada, Alder Barr, Alder Clouter, Alder Krausey, Alder Rice, Mayor Richardson, Alder Schroeder, Alder Scott is absent, Alder Strassman, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. First up for public appearances, non agenda items, new appointments, all that, I'd like to do the Merrill proclamation honoring former Mayor Doug Morissette, and I know that he's got some of his kids here, if they could join me up here, that'd be great to start.
And for those who don't know, former Mayor Doug Morissette passed away late last year, and so not only was he mayor, but town chairman, and so I thought it was appropriate to have this proclamation in honor of him. Whereas, former Mayor Doug Morissette passed away on October 16th, 2019, and is being remembered by the Fitchburg community as one of the most impactful mayors in Fitchburg's 173-year history as a town, and more recently as a city since 1983. And whereas, Mayor Morissette served as town chairman for three terms from 1975 to 1981, before being elected as mayor in 1993, and serving three terms until 1999. And whereas, Mayor Morissette's visionary leadership helped guide Fitchburg from a township to the city of Fitchburg, and he was instrumental in transforming Fitchburg from a bedroom community of Madison to the dynamic city that Fitchburg is today. And whereas, Mayor Morissette's steadfast financial stewardship improved the city's bond rating from A in 1995 to AA3 rating in 1999, setting in motion financial management policies, partnering with Elers Associates, that have been utilized by subsequent mayors and councils, that led to Fitchburg's AA1 rating today. And whereas, Mayor Morissette led the initiatives for the construction of Fitchburg City Hall, the significant transformation of McKee Road, County PD, from a country road to a four-lane urban boulevard, construction of the Public Works Facility, and launched the expansion of the Oak Hall Cemetery. And whereas, Mayor Morissette embodied the phrase "service above self," through his actions from joining the National Guard at the age of 16, serving for four years in the United States Air Force, being a member of the Cable Commission prior to being an elected official, serving as election expector for many years after his elected service, and having the honor of being the keynote speaker for the 2017 City of Fitchburg Memorial Day observance. And whereas, Mayor Morissette always considered his contributions as Fitchburg Town Chairman and Mayor as community service, as willing to make tough decisions for the betterment of Fitchburg regardless of political ramifications. And whereas, Doug's unprecedented legacy in Fitchburg will be felt for generations to come, and the city is grateful to have had such a visionary during his many years of leadership. Now therefore, I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of the City of Fitchburg, do hereby request, as a tribute to the memory of Mayor Doug Morissette, that City of Fitchburg residents and businesses work together in a respectful and cooperative manner to make our community a healthy, vibrant, and safe place to live, work, and play, proclaim this 10th day of March 2020 in the City of Fitchburg.
I first met Mayor Morissette when I worked at Farbox Grocery Store, where I turned 16, that was the first job I had, and his wife, Mary, was a cashier there, a checker, and I was a bagger and stock boy and all those types of things, and so I got to meet him, come in and see her and say hi to everyone, and during that time, he was actually mayor, he ran for reelection, I remember his wife wearing her vote for Doug Morissette for Mayor pin proudly, and that was really kind of a great thing for me to have that connection to him and meet him that way, and his wonderful wife as well. Would any of you like to share anything as well about your parents?
Yeah, we got a little thing that we kind of prepared here. My brother wasn't able to attend tonight, he's ill, so we're kind of doing this for us, for all of us here. So, on behalf of my brother and my two sisters, we appreciate the send-off that was given to our father for his funeral with the Honor Guard, especially with the police and fire departments, we appreciated that and everything else that was done for him. He would have loved it and would have been very proud of that, for sure. We'd like to thank the City of Fitchburg for recognizing our father for tonight, he would have been very grateful, as the city meant very much, or a lot to him. It was our family's home for over 48 years, and we all have special memories here, and it will continue to be our parents' home at Oak Hall, and will remain in all of our hearts for years to come, so thank you.
I know there are a lot of people here tonight that worked with Doug and Mary, and were friends with them, and really knew them throughout the years, I'd actually invite all of you to come up, and we'd like to do a group photo with everyone that was impacted and worked with them as well, so I know there's a number of people, if you could come up and join us, that'd be great. All right, I know that Gavin and I have a number of things that people want to speak about tonight, just kind of reminder that we do ask people to speak for three minutes or less. I do have two people that want to speak on non agenda items before they do the public hearing, so I thought I'd do these quick. First, Mark Jones, if you could come up and speak.
Mark Jones, 2266 South Sine Road, City of Fitchburg. It's train season again, and the trains have started to run the last couple days. Last fall, the Burn Road Crossing, when they started the trains up, they weren't going to run at night, but they are running at night now. Burn Road, where I'm asking that each of you look at that crossing and see if we can put a stop sign at that crossing. We have a yield sign there, I've talked to the railroad, the railroad doesn't care as long as there's signage there. We have a speeding problem on Burn Road, so it'll solve some of that. We have had a fatality at that crossing over the years ago, but there was a fatality there. So, it's the main route for anybody who's in the Oregon School District, who lives in the Greenfield Gold Area, to go to school and to come home. And there's been several near misses since the trains are running again, thank heavens that they've only been that. And that's the only crossing in the city, including my private crossing that I have. The insurance company made us put a legal stop sign set up on a private crossing in order to provide the liability part of it. And it's kind of silly that the city down the road has a lot more traffic, has a yield sign. I did bring a petition in a while back to one of our former Public Works Directors, and it got, it was not ever, there was nothing ever done with it. So, I'm asking each of you, I would rather come here and ask and talk about it here than at somebody's wake. So, please take a look at that, please give it some consideration. I know it's, they don't run as much in the wintertime, but there's, anymore, it's only about two or three months that they don't run. So, we really need to have something different than what we have there now, so I appreciate it if you give it some thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Pat, if you and staff can provide a recommendation. Great. All right, I have one other submission to read. To the County Council and Mayor, at the 352020 Parks Commission Meeting, the draft CIP was discussed, Project 6271, recreational circuit for Dunsmarsh. First paragraph refers to a boardwalk connection between the Capitol City and Cannonball Trails, or the second paragraph describes a broad concept of using this opportunity to create a community park on the west side of Dunsmarsh. And if Dunsmarsh becomes a community park, the funding source for a new boardwalk would likely be eligible for funding from park fees from developments. CIP 6271 is directly related to Comprehensive Plan, Alder Amendment Number 15, Recreation 2C8, New Policy 1.1.3, Identify and Develop Community Park Sites That Serve the West Side of the City. At the same 35 Parks Commission Meeting, it was established that the west side community park concept has never been brought before the Parks Commission. Boundaries of the west side are undefined, and the population makeup of the area is unknown. Nearby Fitchburg and City of Madison parks and private amenities have not been evaluated. That such a big decision bypasses the Park Commission's baffling, our request to widen the road would have Public Works review. Is there no policy to route the question of need for a new community park through Parks Commission? Is this a good idea or a bad idea? How would one have any idea? Whether or not you adopt this new community park, I hope you will consider that regarding our existing parks, either the proper development or maintenance of them are well-funded. Thank you, Sue Easterday from Fitchburg, and also included a picture of the shelter roof at Wildwood that will finally be replaced this year in 2020. All right. Moving forward for the first public hearing, we have two today. We'll open the public hearing for Resolution R 2320, a resolution to discontinue and vacate the public way described as Outlaw 36, Fifth Edition to Nine Springs, in the City of Fitchburg, Dane County, Wisconsin, pursuant to Section 66.1003 of the Wisconsin statutes. And I don't have anyone for this public hearing, I have plenty of people for the second one. So, seeing no one that wants to speak on this one, I will close that public hearing. And now I will open the public hearing for Ordinance 2020-0-05, in order to adopt the 2020 Comprehensive Plan of the City of Fitchburg by amending Section 22-2 of Chapter 22 of the Municipal Court of Ordinances. So, first up, I have Susan Easterday, and then on deck after that would be Rita Hendricks.
And if I could remind everybody that the public appearance section, you're allowed three minutes to speak.
Hi there, I'm Susan Easterday, 2731 Osmondson Road. I've lived in Fitchburg for 16 years. Jay Hockmuth was not able to be here tonight. Thanks for the opportunity for us to offer comments on the draft Comprehensive Plan dated March 10th, 2020, and thank you for providing the staff the resources needed to get this draft ready for this public hearing. Staff should be commended for the quality and quantity of their work. This draft plan contains many provisions that are in the best interest of Fitchburg residents, especially the wording on Pages 5-3 and 5-6 in Resolution R 239-19. This wording assures elected officials to have the final say on the need for and content of Comprehensive Plan amendments. Please vote down any motion to delete or revise this wording. This draft also contains seven provisions that we believe should be revised to assure issues that surfaced the past two years implementing the current Comprehensive Plan do not occur again. While staff has done a good job evaluating our previous comments on these provisions, we hope the council agrees the pros of making these seven revisions outweighs the cons. In the remarks I handed to you then, there are these seven provisions summarized, and on the reverse page is the more specific wording requested. And I will close my portion by saying, assuming the council approves the final say wording on Pages 5, 3, and 5-6, please do not refer back to the Plan Commission any of the revisions listed above that are approved by the council because, A, that step is not required by the final say wording, and B, comments were submitted at the January 21st, 2020 Plan Commission Meeting, asking for these seven revisions, but none were approved by the commission. Thank you for considering the comments that summarize our February 11 comments and on the 31020 draft.
Thank you. All right, Rita, and after that is Pat Stevens.
Good evening, I'm Rita Barkenricks, a Fitchburg resident for 15 years. A huge thank you for hearing Fitchburg residents on this important Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for providing so many wonderful opportunities to comment and to be informed, as well as keeping it on a great timeline. Thank you to the wonderful staff and elected officials who have prioritized these opportunities. On this Comprehensive Plan, please ensure the council has the final say. We want our votes to count, and passing the responsibility for such important issues off to an unelected commission is not taking responsibility for why you were elected. You have already seen a petition with over 75 signatures from Fitchburg residents. These were gathered from our neighbors who agree that the council should have the final say. On the issue of notification of changes, please increase it to at least 500 feet in the name of transparency. Citizens have the right to know what is going to directly impact them, and there have been several recent instances where this has not happened. Good government is open, transparent government. Fitchburg is improving in transparency, but we can do better. We need to find a way to let people know what's happening. We need to watch out for each other and not just our own neighborhoods. We need to be concerned, because what impacts one neighborhood today could impact another tomorrow. We need to really listen and not assume we know what others are thinking. If plans change, we need to make sure that any residents who might be impacted by that change are notified. Finally, approve the Comprehensive Plan wording in the comments submitted by Jay Hockmuth, Sue Easterday, and Ben Lindberg, all of which are offered to address issues that came up these past few years in implementing the 2009 Comp Plan. We know the Comp Plan has worked pretty well over the last 10 years. However, recent events have demonstrated that there are areas that need to be improved. Now is the time to strengthen the plan by fixing issues that have caused problems and by continuing to improve transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Pat Stevens next, and after that is Robert Proctor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alders. My name is Pat Stevens, and I'm an attorney with Axle Law Firm, and I'm here today on behalf of Geo Development. One of the things that I'm here to talk about, and the main thing I'm really here to talk about, is a very small portion of a big plan, and that's the rail portion of the transportation plan that's contained, the discussion that's contained in the document that you have, that you're considering adopting tonight. The City of Fitchburg has a potential asset in the Fitchburg, Oregon rail trail, and frankly, that is largely underused. The plan talks briefly about that rail corridor, both in the context of passenger rail and also in the context of freight rail. Just to read in part a portion of that, the city continues to be open to the possibility of passenger rail service within the eastern portion of the City of Fitchburg, Oregon rail corridor. And then in regard to freight use, part of this corridor is currently owned by the city in the Village of Oregon, acquired in part with funds by WISDOT to reestablish freight service. So again, there is an acknowledgement of that. From our perspective, I think this really needs to be taken to the next step to put this plan into action, and that's to take a look at that rail corridor and the uses that are adjacent to that corridor, and figure out what the city wants to do with that particular area. So we think that, given where you're at, this is a great time to consider that. Again, how do you take that and take that to the next step? So, when you're talking about the Comprehensive Plan in five years, or three years, or 10 years, whatever it might be, you've got some information that can feed into that. Again, this rail has been out there for a number of years, it's an issue that's, in our view, itching to be addressed, and we'd encourage you to do that. And again, take the opportunity to move the ball forward and take a look at that corridor, the adjacent properties, and how that property should be used.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Robert Proctor next, and after that, Sean Pfaff.
Good evening, Robert Proctor, I represent the Realtors Association, and speaking in support of the Comprehensive Plan, I appreciate all the opportunities that I've been allowed to speak to both the planning commission and to this council on the plan, and all of the work, and how open the staff was to always take any questions and calls regarding the plan. Specifically, on behalf of the Realtors Association, would point out that we're very happy that the plan recognizes the amount of growth that's going to be occurring in Fitchburg, the amount of stress that housing prices are going to be under, and the need to build and increase the amount of housing supply in the city in order to meet that demand. Hopefully, although there is quite a bit of outreach, it would have been nice to see more people involved at a lot of the meetings on a lot of these issues, as we know, has been testified time and time again, that when the actual plans come forward to deal with some of these issues, it tends to have a lot more turnout than when the planning for it happens. But we're very happy with the recognition of that and the ability to work with the city staff on all of those issues, though we support it, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sean.
Well, thank you, and Sean Pfaff, 5843 Schuman Drive. You sit in a position tonight that I wish I would have sat in, when I sat up there for my six years as an alder and a mayor. I never had a chance to vote on a Comprehensive Plan. Mayor Clouter's last meeting in April of '09 is when it passed, and I came in and took Ms. Rice's seat in '09. But I was part of the execution of this last Comprehensive Plan. And the conversation I think has changed in this town to, is not if we're going to grow, it's how. And those are some serious battles, and you guys have been through that. And trust me, I get the importance of strong neighborhoods, and listening to strong neighborhoods, but I also think that a community that is halfway between Epic, the fastest-growing business in the state, and downtown Madison, we have bigger things at stake as well. And that Comprehensive Plan that you're updating tonight, I think Mike is gone, but maybe Pat can correct me if I'm wrong, close to a billion dollars worth of growth in that plan over the last 10 years. And that included a recession. And so, yes, I wasn't a total fan of many of the things in there, but at the end, it seemed all worked together, and we as a council had our battles, and I know you have, has had them as well, because I've observed and watched and seen, and I give you credit for hanging in there on stuff. But as you look globally at Comprehensive Plans, remember where you sit tonight. You were blessed geographically, were blessed with diversity, and I think Fitchburg's commitment to that, I applaud you for keeping that going forward, because we will continue to see economic growth, we will continue to see schools, the Oregon School District is getting big, because we opened up the Oregon part of the district. I absolutely got pounded when we opened up Lacy Road for Stoner Prairie, pounded. We set up a neighborhood committee, we worked through it. Now, I realize that changed, I'm not here to litigate that. But I'm just telling you that those decisions are hard, and I've enjoyed sitting where the mayor sits right now and where Janelle sat greatly. Can't say I always miss, especially with Brewer season coming up, so I can watch the games, but anyway, I would hope that when you vote on this tonight, you work through all your amendments, but you keep in mind the fact that Fitchburg is no longer, in my opinion, have the conversation of if, but how. And that how will allow us to reinvest, as we sat up there today at Pancake Cafe, Bowman Dairy, beautiful place where Nikita Kruzhchev was at, is now knocked down for redevelopment. And that's a good thing, and I applaud you, Mr. Mayor, and your council and your predecessor for hanging in there on North Fish Hatchery Road for Plessco's project. These things are good, I hate to be an old soul here, but hang in there, Tom, you told me that when you were mayor, Comprehensive Plans aren't easy, but in the end, you got to work through it and keep the big picture in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a number of people who have registered only to read through. Heidi Knapp from Fitchburg, registering. Please listen to the voters, and have the city council have the final say, not the planning commission on the Comprehensive Plan amendments. James Wheeler from Fitchburg, registering in support, and in support only if language is included, that the council, the governing body, have the final say on Comprehensive Plan amendments. Gary Padoni from Fitchburg, registering. Please vote for keeping the verbiage that gives the city council the final say on Comprehensive Plan amendments. While coming to an agreement is nice, there has to be a hierarchy where the final decision is made. Only makes sense that it lies with our elected officials, who have the full perspective on what's best for the city, with the planning commission in a recommendation capacity only. Thank you. Josie Padoni from Fitchburg. The council should be the highest authority in determining final decisions on all matters, since they have insights the planning commission would not have. Please vote to keep it that way. Why should planning commission have that special treatment when all their commissions do not? Sean Mock from Fitchburg. We want the council to have final say and other changes suggested by Jay Hockmuth. Don Strassman from Fitchburg. I want the council to have final say and other changes by Jay Hockmuth. Cheryl Strassman from Fitchburg. We want the council to have final say and other changes suggested by Jay Hockmuth. And that is all I have, unless I missed something, or lost chance for anyone before I close the public hearing. All right, seeing nothing for this public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing now, and that is all I have for public appearances for non agenda items, and we can go along next to the consent agenda. Second, about Shannon, is there anything that anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. That passes. Next up, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Given that this is an evening all about the Comp Plan, I just wanted to take the time to congratulate and thank our staff, led by Sonia and her team upstairs. I think, as has been noted by several public appearances tonight, the staff has done an excellent job, not only working through the document, but working with the public, communicating the plan in various public venues, and making this a totally transparent process. So, thank you, Sonia, and the planning staff.
All right, thank you. So, moving on to planning commission, the first three items, we postponed last meeting, we just postponed them, we probably should have postponed them to the 24th meeting, because there hasn't been an Ag and Rural Affairs meeting yet for the first two, and the third one, we just haven't gotten enough information quite yet. So, if, Tom, you could move to postpone these first three again, that would be great. So if, Tom, you could move to postpone these first three again, that would be great.
I agree. The first one on the planning commission was CS 2330-20, request by Paul Maxwell, agent for Helen Purcell, for approval of a certified survey map for a drive property along Adams Road. The lot number is four, CSM 10315, into two lots. The mayor's already stated, I move these postponed to the end of the month.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions? Yeah, Dorothy.
I was just going to say quick, I looked at the map that's in there, and it looks as though it's going to be something that Ag is going to be happy with.
All right. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. And the next one is related to the same project.
Right. Next one is RZ 2331-20, request by Paul Maxwell, agent for Helen Purcell, to rezonate a portion of property along Adams Road, lot four, CSM 10315, from exclusive agriculture district to rural residential district. Move again, postpone when it was postponed before.
Second.
Say anybody, Janelle? Questions? All right. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That is postponed as well.
Number three was Resolution R 236, a resolution endorsing the city's request to amend the urban service area for a Fehe property in the McGaw neighborhood. And this also was postponed from our last meeting. I'm going to move to postpone it. It's not quite there yet, am I?
Correct. Second. Say anybody, Dan? Yeah, again, this is just, they just got to get a little more done before they're ready to have us approve this one as well. So, any questions on this? All right. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is postponed. All right, now we can do a real one-time.
The next two we'll vote on, it's our 23-20 Resolution, discontinue and vacate the public way described on an outlot, 36, fifth addition to Nine Springs in the city of Pittsburgh, Dane County, Wisconsin, in pursuit to Section 66103 of the Wisconsin State statute, move to approve. Planning commission approved that.
Is there a second? All right. Say anybody, Julia? Chris, do you want to come up and speak to this?
Evening, everybody. Chris Armstrong, 5803 Auburn Drive, representing Avante Properties. I was up here beginning of the year as we initiated the replating process for a block in our uptown project, and this is kind of the culmination of that. So I was just going to take the chance to give you a little update on what happened. And so, long story short, we have, as part of the smart code, we need to dedicate some public bike paths, and as we planned out the block, we wanted to move it down about 20 feet, and kind of wish there was a better way, but we had to kind of back up and replat everything. So I'm going to quick show you two maps on what we had planned and what we're moving forward with. So this was the original block plan. You may be familiar with Prima and the roundabout at East Cheryl and Lacy. Right over here is the new project for Phoenix. But we've built the two Prima buildings, Raven, and, you know, we were going to build this pool house here, and then reassessed the connectivity that we couldn't get through, and the fact that we wanted to make this pool house more available to the rest of the apartment buildings. So the bike path, the bike path that we're talking about, or the pedestrian path, is right here, and essentially, this is where we're ending up, and we moved that bike path over to here. So it's really just a short move south, and then we create, this is built, this clubhouse here and this pool. So I think we felt that as a, you know, the developer of this block, that we wanted to make this clubhouse more accessible to everyone. So that's the master plan as it stands. Hopefully, we don't have to move that thing again. But we're going to break ground on this, you know, as soon as we get through this process and can pull a building permit. So this 71 unit will be going up starting the spring, and we've got two more buildings that, you know, like to keep going on probably next spring and the following spring. So like to finish off this block and move on to the next one. But that's the reason why we're going through this. I thought it'd maybe be a chance to just show you, because we don't get up in front of you all that often. Any questions?
Questions at all, or comments? That's seeing none. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
All right. Good luck tonight.
Thank you. That is approved. All right. Next, which we've all come here for. Do you want to do a motion this one time?
Make a motion, this is 2020-005, an ordinance to adopt the 2020 comprehensive plan of the city of Pittsburgh by amending Section 22-2 of Chapter 22 of the Municipal Court of Ordinance. Move approval.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Say anybody, Janelle? All right. Do I start things off?
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Sonia.
So tonight, the council may take action on its first major update to the 2009 plan. I just wanted to thank all of you, as well as the public, our other commissions, and the planning commission and staff, for all of the hours of review and debate for the last six to nine months. You are in receipt of the plan that's been recommended by the planning commission from their meeting on January 21st earlier this year. A detailed summary of the draft was provided at the January 21st meeting, as well as our committee of the whole meeting in this room on January 22nd. So rather than go through all of that summary again, I wanted to go through via the staff memo, which Pat has up on the screen, which focuses mainly on a suggested procedure to work through potential amendments as they may come up tonight. So again, the draft plan, as was included in your packet, is as was recommended from the planning commission in January. And then there are five steps that I'd suggest maybe working through for your amendments. So if you just go ahead and scroll down. Item number one is just some technical items. These are typos or staff corrections that are suggested as maybe one motion for approval if they are acceptable to the council, and you can find those in Attachment A in the memo. And then item number two is a list of amendments that were suggested by various alders of the city council, following the committee of the whole meeting on January 22nd. There are 48 of them. They've been highlighted in yellow in Attachment B in your packets, and the idea from staff here was to treat that sort of as a consent agenda, items that in staff's review were relatively minor tweaks, changes to policy language, and/or consistent with other goals and policies of the comp plan. Item number three, just separated out a couple of those alder-recommended policies that may warrant additional discussion. One is regarding the language in the category for high-density residential land uses. A second item is regarding state-imposed limitations on use of park fees. So we can go through those in more detail as we get there. Item C is really related to the question of planning commission versus council authority. And then finally, item D is that very issue, planning commission versus council authority. When you get to item D, you can go ahead and scroll down a little bit more. There you go. Option A is the version of the language that was previously recommended by the council in the resolution at the end of 2019. Option B is what came forth from the planning commission, and of course, you always have the option to suggest something different. Item number four is a summary of all of the written comments received from the public since the January 21st meeting. The recommendation from staff is not necessarily to make any changes, but we just wanted to make sure that you had a copy of all of those comments that were submitted, and staff's also responded to them. And then finally, item five would be any other items that you wish to discuss that are not highlighted here. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, for anything else.
All right. Yeah, so I think that's a great kind of strategy. Like Sonia mentioned, I think the first two items we can start off with would be like a consent agenda, if someone wants to approve those, you know, make a motion to approve. And with the second, if there's anything people want to take out of that list, we can do that and tackle separately. If no one wants to take anything out, then we can just approve that list, and then go to the number two, which is minor amendments, and then individually, piece by piece. And then if there are other things, you know, at the end, we can do that. I think that's really all. I think one thing that I did want to mention right now is that with amendments to the motion, we just need a majority, so far, of the seven of us. But for the overall comp plan, when we get done with all the changes and stuff, we do need five votes to pass that, similar to amendments to other things as well. In order for it to pass, it's not a majority, it's five votes. And so, it'd be, I guess, a five into two vote tonight, since there are seven people here. Let's see. I think that's all I really wanted to mention at this point in time. And so, I think we've got a couple of different lists. I think first, if someone would like to make a motion to do an amendment of the list of items in Attachment A, that'd be a good place to start. All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there anything in the Attachment A list that people would like to remove from this? All right. Any comments on this list at all? All right. Seeing none. Then for Attachment A changes, if you are in favor of accepting these amendments, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And if you're opposed, nay. All right. So those amendments are approved. Next, if someone would like to do a motion to approve the items in Attachment B, we can take that next. B is the, yeah, yep. Someone would like to make a motion on this list?
I move a motion for approval.
All right. Second, by Dorothy. Is there anything in this list that anyone would like to remove and talk about separately?
As mentioned in the comments for the opening comments, for Recreation 2C8, a new policy detailing, it was Dorothy's.
You know which item number it is on the list?
It's 15 under Dorothy's list.
Yeah. Page 182, Recreation 2C-8.
2C, so it's way down here. There you are.
There it is.
Yep, okay. All right. I'll just, I'll remove it for now, and then we'll talk more about it. So we'll just remove that one for now. All right. Is there anything else in Attachment B to remove and talk about separately? Seeing nothing else. So we'll take this out. So I guess I'm going to ask you to approve is Attachment B minus this, well, it's not really item 15. It's the, but it's 15, it's the section 2C8. So if you're in favor of approving this list, minus 2C8, please say aye. 2C8, it's number 15 on there, Recre, but there's more than 115 in Attachment B, but it's the, we'll talk about it separately. It's just removing it from this approval, and we'll talk about it next. So all in favor of approving this list, minus this item right here, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's talk about number 15 then. Probably still need a motion to approve it, and then we can discuss it further.
I move approval.
Second, by Julia. All right. Discussion. Sarah, do you want, yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
This was kind of pointed out by, the opening comments by Sue. This wasn't ever brought forth to parks, and it just felt a little uncomfortable from the Parks Commission to have kind of this specificity given of a West Side park, and it just seemed a little premature to have this amount of detail when nothing had been brought forth to the parks. And it just would be, I think, following a process of having things approved and discussed with the commissions. It just feels like that would be more appropriate.
Dorothy, and then Julia, after that.
Not necessarily as a community park, but the Dunn's Marsh Project has been on Scott Endel's desk for years and years and years. I've had to push it really hard. I've got people from the city of Madison, both residents and staff. I've got people from Dane County that have been aware of this for years. When I talked to Scott, probably two years ago now, about the possibility of community parks and whatever, he said we would have to do a study, et cetera, et cetera. This is saying, let's do that study, finally.
Yes, my comment is, if we are, it doesn't mean that we include this language here, it doesn't mean that it's like a mandatory, we are going to do that. It's kind of like a consideration that we should reconsider. You know, develop a park in the West Side, you know, it doesn't mean this is what is the comprehensive plan. We are adding things that we can plan for future. So I don't, I don't know, maybe you feel more comfortable with another language there, Sarah?
Yes, Sarah.
And I guess I, maybe if it was more of a vague language, that just, I hate to say Tom's language, but just kind of as, as the city may develop to the West, or even vague or yet to say, as the city develops, parkland will be considered where it develops. I just, for this to be so specific to the West Side of the city, and like, it just felt like it, it seemed a little out of place. And I know when talking to the Parks Commission and asking kind of Scott specifically, he had said that just, he knows that there had been comments from Madison, but that there's a park very close to that, this current location on the Madison area. So just kind of looking logically as to if this would be a place that a park would best go, it seems a little, I just think it'd be uncertain if that would be the best place where we could have the most residents have use of a park. And so I guess I would be comfortable with more of a vague language to state that obviously parks are really valued in Pittsburgh. They came, it was very apparent within the comp plan discussion that it's something that the residents really value, and I think we should continue to prioritize for the city. But just this language specifically calling out a location and not having a driving force behind that does make me feel uncomfortable, especially with talking to the Parks Commission and understanding that, I mean, we hadn't been looped in, and I guess, talking to Scott, we didn't know of anything specific where, I know, being on parks, I'd never heard of anything, and just it seems a little too specific for my preference.
Sarah, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is it kind of the identify and develop versus something that would be, you know, kind of evaluate the need for a community park on the West Side?
Even that would make me feel better. It is, it is just, it just feels very specific and knowing that, that yes, that is, and just knowing, having the conversation within parks, that it just didn't feel right from the, necessarily from the commission's perspective either.
Dorothy?
If I had, and I suppose if I read ahead all the agendas, I would probably maybe have known that that was going to be on the agenda for parks, and I would have gone to talk about it. The concept for that particular location is to do what we're doing already, to do biking. We've got the Cannonball and Cap City Trails there. We've got the county mountain bike paths. We got the bike hub. We have the We got the bike hub, we have the only bicycle roundabout in the whole state right there. The other aspect of that location is a lot of conservancy. People in Highlands off Adali Drive have been doing a lot of pickup, cleanup type work in the conservancy. They would like it to be a little bit more official, to be able to spend money even on doing some of the work that they're doing. When you look at where the community parks are geographically, Swan Park is probably pretty, or McKee Farms Park, sorry, is probably geographically pretty center. The golf course is significantly to the east. McKee Farms Park is significantly to the east. There is no community parks to the west. One of the ongoing discussions that a lot of us have not had yet, but I've been more than a little bit involved in, is the fact that when it comes down to budget, if there are parks that are grandfathered into the city before they were part of a development, they never were allowed to have any of the development fees used to do things in those parks. Any of those older parks, you have to use levy money to do any kind of improvements in. To be able to do community parks on the West Side to, there, if you talk about, is there development on the West Side, heck yes. There's a lot of development, including new development. I consider pretty much everything west of, say, Richardson, to be the west half of the city. So if we want to find a dividing line, that's about what it is for me. There, there's just a huge hole on the West Side. The West Side doesn't get the attention of the city very much at all. And I think it's time to be a lot stronger about getting some things there, especially with a lot of the new development that we've had down Seminole Highway and areas that really need something. And it's quite appropriate in the transportation and transit plan, bike plan, whatever, whatever. It talks about doing a larger concept park, and I call it community park, based on the biking that we have at Dunn's Marsh. And it's kind of to say, we're going to quibble on whether it's a need, mostly because Scott hasn't brought it before the Parks Commission, probably because I haven't devoted myself to talking about what the residents of both Madison and Pittsburgh in that area have been asking for, for years. Maybe it's my bad to not have pushed it harder, but I've been talking to Scott, again, for years about this.
Dan.
Just a couple of comments. First, Dorothy, I, I want to say, I think you've done a really nice job advocating for new various park options in my, on my time in the council. You've been very active, and I have supported you when I can within the constraints of a budget. And, and so, and I agree with you that there are vulnerable neighborhoods. There are areas where there's new development on the West Side, on both sides of the highway, that I, I feel could use park space. However, I want to say this, before we do that, we got to maintain what we have. And I do feel there's a deficit in terms of our park maintenance budget. I have a, Sue yesterday from the Wildwood Neighborhood Association, she's the president, she's here, you know, we talked about this. You know, we have mold and moss and, and plants growing on top of the roof of the Wildwood Shelter. It's, it's in terrible shape. It's scheduled to be replaced in the 2020 budget, but it's way overdue. There are other needs too. We've had debates about, you know, fences and things like that. I'd like to see those things get done before we add new stuff, because you add new stuff, of course, that costs money. And then in addition to that, you got to maintain them. So of course, we have needs we have to address. And so I would just say, think about that. I have no problem with this, but it's something to think about, the, the parks maintenance. And I get a lot of contacts about that from constituents. And so I think that's something to think about as well.
Julia.
So what I want to add is, we are, this is a comprehensive plan we're talking about for the next ten years. So we are not telling, I don't think that we, if we approve it, we are saying we are going to build this park tomorrow, in next year. What we're trying to see is, I like the mayor concept of say, we evaluate, or if we, you know, use a more vague language to say that we are reconsidering the future to determine if we need to build a park in that area. And I think we put some money in the CIP plan last year about this plan. So we have been talking, since I am in, in the city council, we have been talking about this area and this Dorothy wants to build, you know, the, what is it, the.
The boardwalk?
The boardwalk, and so we have been talking that for the last five years about what to do in that part. So it's nothing new. So I think that we need to be, we need to compromise and look for, you know, where we feel comfortable. But this is a plan for ten years, it doesn't mean that we are going to build a park in the next year. But we need to consider that we need to have this type of amenity in that part of the city, you know. And we already voted and approved it last year in the CIP, some money for this, so.
Do you want to make a motion, Sarah?
I do appreciate your comments, Julia, that I think that's fair, to just kind of broadly thinking about it, that I, yeah. I appreciate the feedback and understanding that, and I'm fine moving forward. It just was nice to have this conversation.
All right, and seeing no other changes or comments, then all in favor of approving as-is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, then that one also passes. Moving along now to the items that probably need a little more discussion. First up is 3A, which is Royal Pittsburgh Grove, on page 417 of the item. And this was an edit requested by Julia, and it is in, oh, that's not in 15. And, well. Yes, yep, this is it, yeah. So adding the language in red, additional density categories that comply with HDR as described may be specified and adopted in the comprehensive plan through a neighborhood planning process. So Julia, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I want to motion, and maybe Sonia can help me to explain what I tried to do here. I'm, I move a motion to approve Edit Number 15.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dorothy. Do you want to speak to it more, Julia, or you want Sonya to speak?
Yeah, I want to start, and Sonya can. The idea was to, when we talk in the past about the different type of high density that we have in the, in the, in the comprehensive plan and the land use, we talk about that high density in a start like a nine unit up to the sky, okay? So the idea was that how we can create another, you know, layer of, okay, high density, we can say high density from nine to fifteen, or twenty, twenty to forty, I don't know. So after talking to Sonia, we agree in a compromise, and then you can explain what is this compromise.
So this paragraph is just one section of the land use section of the plan. There are similar categories for medium density residential, low density residential, industrial general, et cetera. And those all define what those land use categories should look like. So as Julia explained, our, our high density residential category is defined as only a density of nine dwelling units per acre and above. A lot of the projects that we've seen in the city in our higher density residential categories are not nine dwelling units per acre. For example, the senior housing project on Trace Way and Fish Hattery Road is about sixty dwelling units per acre. And the new juice plant redevelopment site is forty dwelling units per acre. There are numerous examples of twelve to fifteen. Those all fall into that same category. So part of the idea here is that through a neighborhood planning process for a specific neighborhood, additional categories could be brought in through that planning process to provide additional categories or density options for the neighbors and residents in those areas. That way, they might better expect or anticipate exactly what they're approving. So if it's just a blanket HDR, it'd be ninety U's and up. Or if they had three categories, for example, it could fall into those different densities. We do have examples like this already. North Stoner Prairie defines things differently than our comp plan, as well as the McGaw Park Neighborhood Plan.
Questions, Dorothy?
And I would love that to be very apparent as developers look at proposals they might bring forward to know in advance that HDR doesn't necessarily mean you're going to put eighty units an acre. I, I would like them to know before they consider a project what limitations we're putting on how many units per acre we're looking for. So I completely agree with outlining it a little more clearly than we've got now.
All right, Dan?
So I'm going to say, I agree with Julia.
Oh.
Oh, man.
I feel the earth slowing down.
I agree with Julia. So, and, and, and here's why. Here's why. I think it's good to have different options. Obviously, we have a lot of issues, and, and the level of density is a big issue. However, I think it's important to, to keep in mind, you know, when you're going through these processes, people want options, more options are always a good thing. So that being said, you want to have the tools in the toolbox, and so I like this. This is well thought out, well written, and. And Sonya.
Anyone else? No? Oh, yes, Sarah.
Did you have any concerns about this change from a planning perspective of limiting from, limiting developers or confusion with residents? I, like, I think it makes sense to me too, that it seems more transparent to give more detail, but I'd love to hear your perspective.
Sure. This is a topic that I know came up before we even started the comp plan update process. So had we had a lot more time, we might have looked at how this impacted the city as a whole. But I think the way that it's written is limited enough to neighborhood planning processes. That way, we can look at it for those neighborhood plans individually and have a detailed conversation, for example, when a new neighborhood plan is being crafted. So I'm comfortable with that.
All right, Dorothy.
And would we be anticipating, once we get a little bit of experience in doing it, would we anticipate rolling that into a comp plan update in the future?
I think it's possible. We could look at how it fared well, or how it didn't work well, and, and consider that.
I would, I would expect so. All right, anything else? All right, all in favor of approving this Edit Number 15, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, that one is approved. Dorothy, we have number, it's the number sixteen in Recreation. Do you want to make a motion for this one?
I would move approval.
All right, second by Julia. Would you like to speak to it, Dorothy?
Soon as I get there.
All right. I'll just read it while you're looking for it. It says to add to the section, strive to change state imposed limitation on use of park dedication fees to enable use for parks developed before Pittsburgh became a city. While you're looking for that, Valerie, do you want to speak to the legality of this, or ability of us to do this?
Yeah, absolutely. So the limitation that we have in using park fees, park dedication fees for existing parks comes from the legislative framework in the state of Wisconsin that basically says that impact fees, as the name suggests, have to be applied to the things that are impacted by the development. So in other words, let's say you had a farm, a sub divider comes in and puts in a hundred houses. Those houses have people who live in them. Those people have children, dogs, or just their own recreational needs, and so we need a park. So now we can ask a developer to dedicate land and some fees to help pay for the improvements on that land, because that need was created by the development. What we can't do is take that money and apply it to existing parks, because the needs we have in existing parts, in existing parks, however real and tangible those needs are, they're not created by the new development. And so that's the statutory framework that we've had, and I think we've had it for a very long time, currently under the state statutes. So the city of Pittsburgh doesn't have any authority by policy or by ordinance to do something different. What we've interpreted it in the past to mean is that if we have a large park that draws people from all over the city, or at least a portion of the city, rather than a very small neighborhood park, we can consider that additional residents that are created by the development as creating an additional need in that park, and so we may add amenities at that park. So for instance, maybe we now need an extra tennis court, or we need a newer, bigger shelter, because there are more families in the area. At a community park, at a large park that draws those kinds of crowds from all over the city. So while I understand the sentiment, and I understand the desire to want to use some of that money to address existing needs, and I realize those needs are very real, unfortunately, our hands are tied. We're also fairly limited in what we can do as a city in terms of our lobbying activities. And so to suggest that the city would go out and lobby the legislature for a, a change can present some challenges of its own. The League of Municipalities does a very nice job of advocating on behalf of municipalities at the legislative level, and, and that's what we do. But we as staff and as elected officials generally don't do that kind of lobbying.
Dorothy.
And it was that lobbying that that is asking for, strive to change state imposed limitations. I know, and this is what I was complaining about, about when I was talking earlier. We cannot use, and I would like to see that get changed, whether we agree as a city that we want to work with league and municipalities, or whatever we can do to help try to influence a change in that policy at the state level, is what that is asking for, is for the city to say, we would like to see that changed.
Pat, do you want to?
Yeah, and that would have to come from the elected officials, and that would have to go directly to the state legislators. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be an initiative that would be given to staff to, you know, have control over.
So you're saying that's more of just a request by, instead of putting it in a planning document?
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to put in the document, but it would be, you know, a policy of the community that, you know, maybe elected official would go to the league and request that that be looked at.
Just a question for Valerie. Back, I think in two thousand, maybe sixteen, there was, a homeowners bill of rights was passed by the legislature, and there were some additional limitations placed on these dedication fees. Do you recall what those were?
Are we talking about the developer bill?
Yes, yes.
They were quite lengthy.
Yeah.
There were specific accounting procedures. There's a length of time that those fees have to be used or returned to the developer. We now have to treat our land division fees as impact fees, which we didn't have to do in the past, because there are a couple of different ways that those fees can be structured. And essentially, we were forced to treat our fees as impact fees, even though they're not technically written as such, so.
But, and, and I guess I would just comment that, if I could. So we've tried to use some of these fees for parks other than, you know, what's determined to be a city centerpiece park. And we've been, you know, we have severe limitations. I'd like to see some flexibility, a little bit, but I, I understand the money, because of development, you build a park, and thus developer pays, that makes sense. But it's, it seems it's gotten very strict, pretty rigid in terms of how these fees can be used.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I have no problem asking staff to request this be some, you know, of the legal, the state municipalities to look into. I know that have lobbying days that all of us are welcome to attend as well, and that could be another thing to encourage. I, I just, I know Pat, you know, based on his concern that it's, asking to do lobbying isn't necessarily a comprehensive planning issue, but.
And it's something we would have to tread very lightly, because we're very limited in the kind of political activity we can, we can engage in, because of the nature of.
Do you know?
Of a municipality.
So just one point of clarification. So right now, we've got a parcel of land, for example, that's over by the two Verona schools. And that particular parcel could probably use some playground equipment or things of that nature. If I understand correctly, we are able to make those modifications within our existing framework. Is that correct? No.
No.
So we couldn't take a parcel of land that we've already got as a park and add features to that?
Not with these fees, because it's not, if it was a community park, we, it could, but our community parks are McGaw, McKee, the golf course is now considered, and the dog park is now considered community parks. So but, so we could use those in those parks for a new feature. You can't even use it to, like, fix the tennis course, which is also annoying. It has to be a new feature. But if it's not a community park, then you can't use those fees at all.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
But is, if we increase the side of the shelter in McKee, you know, we can use those fees, and if we increase more than 50% of the size of the shelter, we can use it?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty fact-specific. But for instance, if we're saying we now need a bigger shelter because there are just more people in Pittsburgh because of these new developments, and we need, not just, the roof is leaking and we need a new roof.
No, I know, I understand, but we, we.
We need a bigger shelter, yes, I think under that.
We can, okay.
New bathrooms, made concessions to.
Absolutely.
Or more bathrooms. We need to use levy money to, you know, if we need a new playground equipment in other parks, you know what I mean? We cannot use that money. So that one is, I agree with that, that we should have some flexibility in that pot, you know, because sometimes the pot is growing, and we can only use in the three parks, and we have parks in other areas where the shelter need attention, or we need to replace the equipment. But on the other hand, we don't have money in the budget to do it, so it's kind of like.
And I think staff are aware of that, and we want to be as flexible as we can, but we also have to respect the state law, and our hands are, unfortunately, in a lot of situations, fairly tied because of those requirements that are imposed on impact fees.
Dorothy?
If someone remembers, was the Dolly Bike Hub, was that built with levy money?
I, I believe that was built in part with a county bike trail, trail path money grant. I don't know if there was any match. Usually, those grants are like an 80/20 match or a 50/50 match with the county money. So we'd have to look at our financials, but I do recall that, it was prior to my arrival, but there was some county money involved in that.
And the same is true, I know, for the Apache Boardwalk that connects the neighborhood to Cannonball.
Sonya, did you want to weigh in on this at all?
No, I was just pulled out for these very reasons to discuss further, yeah.
Any further questions? All right, so all in favor of making this change to add this language, say aye.
Aye.
And if, so, I don't think we really can, so.
Oh, we, we can have words in the document.
Yeah, I mean, you can put the words in, and we can't do it. So let's, it's close enough, I think I know the answer, but can we just roll call, since it's a little bit split?
Can I ask a question? What is our attorney advisor to do?
With regard to item 16?
Yeah.
I would recommend not including that in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Alder Ratafrada?
No.
Alder Barr?
No.
Alder Clouter?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
All right, no.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Strassman?
All right, I guess we don't need to do roll call. All right, Dorothy, looks like staff is recommending maybe doing C and D together, but do you want to do a motion for either C or C and D?
So it might help if you go back to page two and three out of 19. You're on page eight of 19 right now. Two and three.
Two and three. So this is kind of the, we've talked about this in the past. It's really the who has final say on amendments. Is it the Plan Commission? Is it the council? It's what most people are here to hear what the answer is. I know we've talked about it extensively in the past. We actually voted as a board, as a group at one other time. So I, I guess the, I don't know who wants, I guess C and D aren't really the same thing. They're related, so it's either C or D, maybe.
Right, so item C was suggested by Alder Crowsey. So you could choose to make that type of modification when reviewing item D. If you scroll down to item D, option A there again was recommended by the council by resolution at the end of 2019. Option B was recommended by the Plan Commission on January 21st of this year, and then option C could be some other language, which may or may not include what was suggested by Dorothy, or something else.
So how about this? How about if someone makes a motion to do either option A or B, and then we can change it, maybe add Dorothy's language through discussion, if we want to talk about it through there. So someone wants to make a motion on, on D to do either option A, which is what we originally had proved a while back, or B, which is what Plan Commission approved? So someone wants to make a motion, I think it's, my guess is that someone would want to make, I think, based on our previous vote, the majority of people on this body, I believe, want option A. So someone would like to make a motion to do A. Go ahead, Shana.
I'll make a motion to approve option A.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And Sonya, by Janelle, all right. So I think it's a couple of things. I mean, people can speak to this, which we've talked about extensively. They also speak to whether or not we want to add Dorothy's suggested additional change, which is in C, which is adding the line after consultation with staff and the city attorney. We might want to add that, might not want to, don't really know, but Dorothy?
What my little line adds there, it, it's A with the addition of making sure that staff and, maybe not even and, attorney have the chance to express their opinion to the council before the council makes that final decision. If staff doesn't agree with it and the council wants to do it anyway, then it's on the council, whatever the consequences might be. But I want staff, and hopefully the attorney as well, to be able to make their thoughts known before that decision is made. I think it's entirely appropriate to give staff that opportunity.
Did you know?
If we didn't add that language, how would that play out?
I guess I feel like.
Council would just do what they want to do, regardless of plan or staff.
Generally, we get input, and, Dan, and then Julia, I think after that.
So with her addition to A, I have no problem with that. I, I think typically the staff and the city attorney do offer suggestions on what the law is and legal opinions, things like that. Planning Department certainly does that as well. I, I think that's just fine. You know, obviously, the council is going to have the final say. It's, it's your elected body, but I think it's highly appropriate that they communicate, seek advice from various sources.
All right, Julia, did you have?
No, I want to, I want to give my opinion about this, but I won't.
Either one's fine.
Everyone, I don't know if there are people are going to speak or no?
No one else has raised their hand yet.
Because I am, you know, I am against this, you know, what the council approves, so, but I want to give my opinion why I, I would recommend what Plan Commission says, so.
Please do.
Okay, okay. So I want to read it. So, so I am in favor of keeping the language approved by the Plan Commission regarding amendment procedure for the comprehensive plan. Plan Commission recommends that, following the public hearing, the common council votes to approve or deny the ordinance adopting the proposed plan amendment by majority of vote of the council. The common council make, may make no substantive technical changes to the recommended Plan Commission version of the amendment. Section 66.11014C of the Wisconsin statute prevents the common council from adopting a substantial change to the comprehensive plan, future land use against or without recommendation from the Plan Commission. The city, since 2009, has consistently followed the same interpretation regarding the comprehensive plan amendments. There is a logic explanation why there is a divide between the two bodies. The Plan Commission's responsibility under section 62.23 is to develop and adopt a comprehensive plan and also to amend the master plan from time to time. The Plan Commission and its expert members act as a body that will provide the checks and balance in this process. Additionally, in the League of Wisconsin Municipality Legal Opinion Zone Number 509, the League describes the Plan Commission as an appointed body removed from the politics of elected office. Plan Commission duty is to make policy and lead the politics to the council. Plan Commissioner's role is to have the ability to comprehend complex matter and balance competing interests. Planning Commissioner to act with our political consideration that influence elected official. I, as a council member, would like to hold more power to my position, but we, as an alder, need to reevaluate what is best for the city, know what is best for a special interest group. We need to adhere to the legal advice of our city attorney. As an accountant, we'll say, we need to have check and balances. Doesn't mean separation of power in our process. We need to provide internal controls, and I really believe that if we allow council to defy what the Plan Commission recommends on amendment to the comprehensive plan, we can open the door to undeserved consequences. Lastly, I want to clarify a fact so residents do not get misinformed. And that is 99% of the time, the Plan Commission recommends to council and council take action unilaterally. There is one exception or one time in the plan, that the Plan Commission may be perceived to have more authority than the council, and it's only when there is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And it happens maybe once a year, if it happens. So I will, this is why I decided that I'm going to follow what Plan Commission recommends.
All right. Do you want Valerie to speak to what Pat's saying right now?
Yeah, I will just speak very briefly, as I'm not here to sway you one way or the other. I'm here simply just to clarify what my opinion has been and what the League of Wisconsin municipalities has opined. I'm not advocating that it is better to have checks and balances. I'm not suggesting that it is better for the common council and Plan Commission to come to a consensus. I'm not here to argue about what would be better in terms of what's in the law. I'm just here to talk to you about what's in the law right now and my opinion of that. It's not my personal opinion, it's my professional opinion. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that I'm not here to suggest one way or the other. I don't, you know, I don't have a, I'm not rooting for a team in this game at all. I'm here just because it's my job to tell you that. And so I just want to clarify that the, the reason that my predecessor and I have opined, as we have, and I think the reason, the same reason that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has issued the opinion that they did, is because of the way that the statutes are written. Not because it's good that they're written that way, but because they are written the way that they're written, and all we're left with is interpreting those statutes. And so I would just like to read to you from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities' opinion, which was an opinion that we obtained at the request of the former mayor and council back in early 2019. And what that opinion says is as follows, "The statutory scheme divides the power for the comprehensive planning between the Plan Commission and the governing body. Under the statutory scheme, neither the common council nor the common, nor the Plan Commission has unilateral authority to adopt or amend the comprehensive plan." And then in this opinion, the League goes on to talk about how section 62.23 of the statutes provides that it's the function and duty of the Plan Commission to make and adopt a master plan for the physical development of the city, and it goes on. And so I guess, I think it is an important discussion for you to all to have, and frankly, as far as lobbying's concerned, I wish somebody would lobby the legislature to clean up this language and make it more clear, perhaps. But I think between 62.23 and 66.1001, although it's not written as clearly as it ought to be, I'm struggling to reach a different conclusion other than that there does need to be this meeting of the minds between the Plan Commission and the common council. If the legislature were to change that and to give all of that authority to the common council, I think that would make everybody's lives perhaps much easier. But we're not here right now. And so I'm not, the thing that I want to make clear is that, again, I'm not rooting for this to be this way. It's just, it is what it is, and I don't believe that if we have a comprehensive plan that says something different than what the statute says, it doesn't change the statutory framework. The concern that I have ultimately is just to protect the city from litigation and the expense of litigation. And the concern I have is that if the comprehensive plan is not adopted, consistent with those statutory rules, with the rules that the legislature tells us we have to play by, that we expose the city to litigation, which can lead to either a number of things that we may not want, such as an uncertainty in terms of developers making developments and, and development of land, and also in terms of cost of litigation itself, which of course is not free. So that's, as I said, that's why I'm here. I've distributed this for your reading. I think a lot of you have probably seen this before. I think it's been sent around before, but I just wanted to make you aware of it. And with that, I leave it in, in your discretion. Ultimately, I'm just here to provide advice. I'm not here to make you do anything you don't want to do. You are the elected officials, and you can do as you see fit.
All right, Sonya, do you want to weigh in at all on this one?
Nothing additional.
All right. All right, Shana?
Yep, I have a couple of comments as well. And I know there, just so people are aware that there are other municipalities that have gone through and have said that they would prefer to have your, their council have the final say. And this is not just to have, not to listen to the Plan Commission, this is to pretty much just stop the ping-ponging that keeps going on between the Plan Commission and the council. It's not, well, we don't agree with you, we're going to do what we want. We've been having battles over certain properties, over certain issues, like Stoner Prairie, Fish Hatree, and there needs to be something final that just ends it, or says, this is what's going to happen, or this is not what's going to happen. But if you have a municipality like Madison that can pass this, I think Pittsburgh can do it, too. Thank you.
Dorothy?
One of the problems is that it does open potential floodgates. If it, if there were language in there that limited to eliminating the ping pong match, if, if it says, if by the time it goes back and forth three times, say, then the council can do what they want, but it doesn't say that. It just says the council can do what they want, regardless of what the Plan Commission is saying. So I don't like to have an open-ended thing. So I, I would love to be able to add language in that says, if it's gone back and forth three times, then the council can make a decision opposite, or in opposition to the Plan Commission's recommendation. But as it is, the council can say, nah, we don't want to do that. We want to do what we want to do, regardless of what Plan Commission says. What is before us does open that floodgate. And that's spooky, I think, for probably everybody that's semi-in charge on staff.
Dan?
And by, by the way, I'm going to appoint your office to be the official lobbying point.
Thanks. Dan?
I know most, most people have heard this before, at least to this beginning, but maybe there are some out there that haven't. When this plan was written 10 years ago, this was never the intent, is to put us in the process we're in right now. The intent was a city council would always have the upper hand. That's how it was written, that's how it was supposed to be, and since then, some others' point of views have come into play. But to me, this isn't the Plan Commission. But to me, this isn't the Plan Commission's more powerful, the city council's more powerful than the Plan Commission, and vice versa. That's not what this is about. It's about, and it's interesting too, we haven't had a whole lot of people walk through the door and say, the Plan Commission should have the upper hand. It's kind of been the opposite. If we took a vote, I bet we'd see a whole lot more people saying, council has a say, not the Plan Commission. I know for a fact that there's cities out there that govern that way. Verona, Janesville, Madison, they govern that way. And I'm a little taken back by the city attorney even speaking on this tonight. It's just one Alder saying something. You, other seven can think all you want. We know how the city attorney feels. We already know that. I've been fighting this for a year and a half. But the fact of the matter is, is the city council's elected, the mayor's elected, the citizens elect us, this Plan Commission's not elected, the mayor appoints a Plan Commission, the mayor doesn't have to even be on the Plan Commission, he can appoint someone else, as other mayors have done it in the past. So Stoner Prairie was a real headache, to say the least. It was a headache for the residents, it was a headache for the planners, it was a headache for the city council, and I sure hope we don't have to go through this again. And you know, we've had some people that are pretty intelligent talk to the city council about this problem, and know they're not attorneys, and they're probably not investigators, but they spoke pretty intelligently too, to the city council, saying, do the right thing. You have the trump card. You do have the say over the Plan Commission. There are some people on the Plan Commission that their term's gonna expire soon, and they may not get reappointed, or they may. The point is, it changes. So do we. I get it. I know what you're thinking. So do we. Some of us will change here. Maybe so in the next month, maybe not. But for future councils, I sure hope we can do the right thing. And what do I think about Dorothy's? After the conclusion with staff and the city attorney, we're muddying the water again. Let's muddy it some more. Don't mean it the way it sounds, Dorothy, but you know what I'm saying. It's just adding another layer. Why? We don't need it. We don't need that language. It's not needed at all. It's the planners, the city council. I see people shaking their heads even, that we're talking, I think, in the right path here. The fact of the matter is, don't muddy this more. Jeez, we've muddied this enough in the last two years, haven't we? Don't vote for Dorothy's. Vote for the common council, have the final say. I respect the planners, I like the planners, but they're not elected people.
All right. Anyone else want to speak, or, okay, sir?
For this amendment, I guess I've been really, I have had a hard time, because I can see a lot of cons. One, I really do find our, the expertise of our staff and the planners valuable, that I appreciate hearing Sonia's perspective, and I think that they do have an overarching perspective of the whole city that brings a lot of value to our end decisions or how we review things. I also think that for Tom's comment about the feedback we've received, I do think we didn't receive a ton of feedback on this amendment, so that is limited, and that does make me feel a little nervous. Another con is that the legality aspect makes me nervous. Legal fees, those are transferred to residents, so I don't think it is something to be taken lightly or lightly, and I do think that it's something that should be considered, where I don't want to have to pay for legal fees, I don't think other residents should have to pay for legal fees, and I think it should be something that we consider. And I guess lastly, I do, I do worry about Alders being driven by special projects that, as Tom has kind of said, like squeaky wheels, and not having that big-picture perspective that I do think the Plan Commission can have, just because they don't have specific driven and aren't influenced by specific individuals and one-off requests. However, with all those cons, I do think the back and forth of the residents has just been heartbreaking, and I, that does guide my decision of, I just feel terrible as to how these residents have been to so many meetings and the hours that they've put forth to kind of just back their own beliefs and protect their neighborhood and their homes, and I don't think that we've treated them fairly, and that that doesn't, that doesn't feel right. And also, as another pro, is I do think it is a consistency amongst commissions, where it's a little odd that the Plan Commission is the only one that has this back and forth, that I think it's, it does make sense to me to have consistency. But those are my two pros in kind of a bucket of cons, but that experience we've provided for Pittsburgh residents, I think, has just been terrible, where I guess I don't know if there is something that could be changed, but I do support changing this to have a final say, because we can't go through that again. Like, that was just, watching that from the outside and then being involved on the, and the tail end of the Stoner Prairie resolutions, like, that was just, I don't think that we treated our residents fairly. But I do think that there are several cons and things that concern me that I do think that we should really think through, and that give me pause for this.
All right. Dan?
So I, just commenting on this. So this language, a couple of thoughts. First off, on the legal component of this, there are, and I have a great deal of respect for Valerie. She is incredibly bright and serves our city well. However, there are various legal opinions out there. The Ledge Council, which provides legal services to the state legislature, has the alternative opinion that communities can have the council have the final say. There's, we've gotten a litany of legal opinions from other entities as well, from the outside, as the North Stoner Prairie debate was ongoing, and there just is not a lot of conclusive legal, it's not across the board, there's just different views out there in terms of legal opinions on this. Secondly, we mentioned lawsuits, and I'm, I want to protect the taxpayer, that's important to me, but I'll say this. Unless you have a specific project that comes before this body, where there's not concurrence, at that time, you know, you could decide to publish an ordinance that has not been passed by the Plan Commission, the council could do it under this, but they'd have that option at that time. This isn't saying they're going to do it, as Julia mentioned, 99% of the items roughly, I'm not sure if that's the correct percentage, but roughly a majority of those items are approved by both bodies, and that's great. But ultimately, and it's very fair to say that there should be a system of checks and balances. Our Police and Fire Commission has that sort of system, there are others that do, and it's a legitimate political argument, I think. There's no problem with that. However, I would just simply favor, as our typical structure would dictate, that in these sort of issues, which oftentimes do involve public input, that the council would have the final say.
All right. Dorothy, you go ahead.
And I would say that in the two things that we've had recently that have been the issue, the North Stoner Prairie and the Affordable Senior Housing Project that had been proposed initially, both of those would not have happened if we'd had that level of high density. So that ought to be one of the very first things that we work on, is because that would, if we'd had those levels for developers to look at and consider, we wouldn't have gone so far astray. That is what the real issue became. So I would hope that whatever we decide, that we get real quick on developing those levels for people to work with.
All right. Janine?
As someone who lived in that neighborhood, as someone who spoke on this issue in running her campaign, our neighborhood felt they were not listened to. We repeatedly, we sent small armies, meeting after meeting, and this started out, just to clarify, as an area that was approved for neighborhood density was changed to be high density. The neighbors were not informed, and then when we brought it forward to understand where we had a breakdown in communications, we started this volleying back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. So just as a point of clarification, it wasn't about a density issue initially, it was a fundamental lack of communications. So I have heard from my neighbors time and time again that they respected and respect the Plan Commission, but ultimately, they gained closure by coming to two of the gentlemen that are at this table this evening, and saying, our voices have been lost in this process. And I think ultimately, it was starting out with Tom saying, you know, I wasn't aware of this, we need to work on it. And so on behalf of my neighbors, I think we need to let them know that we are here to represent them.
All right. We go ahead and vote on this one? I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this. So yes, vote would be for the option A, which is what we, the council had previously approved, but not what the Plan Commission had approved. And A would be that you do not want what we had previously approved as the council.
Alder Rodafra?
So to be, can you clarify, so?
A yes would be you want?
What, in the option A now?
A, yep.
Okay.
As it's written there.
As written there. Yep. A yes would be yes to A.
Okay. Alder Rodafra?
No.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clodder?
Aye.
Alder Crosey?
No.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
Aye.
Alder Strasman?
Yes.
Five to two.
All right, that one passes. All right, so those are the things that we had submitted. I guess I will open it up to other items that people might want to bring forward, though we have never talked about it, that's a little concerning, but anything else, other comments, anything like that on the comp plan as a whole?
I think I had a couple that were in there. I don't recall us going through them.
I think that they were included as B, as attachment B, so we approved those as part of B. So you got them all approved. Good work. All right. Tom?
Actually, I just have a question in reference to the number of ones that I had. They were just, you tweaked some of the wording, which I thought was fine, you know?
Sure.
But they weren't, I'm not asking for really a red line, but they were just kind of tweaked within the body. Am I thinking right?
Yes. The recommendations that you had, you presented those at the January 21st Plan Commission meeting, so those got into the draft as was presented to the council. So they're not outlined in this document because they came earlier.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Just another, another question in reference to a number of the ones that the public had brought forward, like, how did you, can you just clarify for me, maybe there is seven of them that Jay brought forward? How did we address those, or did, they may be within the plan in different spots?
Mm-hmm.
And I missed it, but in front of us tonight, there was the residents, I think it's not one residence, there was a number of them brought forward, there was like, I think, seven of them. Sonia, how were they addressed in the plan, or were they not? Or do they have to be separate out now and be looked at?
Mm-hmm. All of the written comments from the public that we received in the last 30-plus days can be found in attachment C, and like you said, there are seven that were submitted and referenced earlier tonight in the public hearing. Those are on the screen right here, and then there were three from another resident that are just at the bottom. They're rather lengthy, but the staff responses are all in red. We can go through them one by one, if that's the desire of the council, or if there are any specific items you wanted to touch on, but I guess in summary, the staff responses were that they, the comments were already adequately addressed in language in other places of the plan, or for the reasons in red text weren't included. So none of these were, changes were made in any of the motions that you just made.
Number six. I just have a question, and it was number six, jumps out at me, from, the one I had was in reference to 5.5 in reference to update occurs deemed necessary by the council, what makes it good for the city? Does that ring a bell?
Is that a number six, you're saying?
Yeah, it might not be the right number. I'm thinking of...
Yeah, I think number six we took care of by adding 500 feet, and so that's addressed point number six.
Okay, okay.
So it might be another one that you're thinking of, Tom?
I'm thinking of, what I'm thinking of, Sonia, is the major update that occurs and deemed necessary by the city that benefits the city.
Mm-hmm.
Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, yep. So you're referring to?
Where's that?
Number seven. So...
How did, the staff says, is information required? Can you verify, clarify that for me?
Yep. The red, I'm sorry, the black text on number seven is suggested by a resident to change language in chapter five of the comp plan, which is the implementation chapter, and that discusses how we might consider whether or not to undertake a major update. Language already included in the draft reads, "The governing body may determine the scope of major updates." I felt that that already adequately addressed the request, as the request here is detailing that the common council may determine. Again, my language read, "The governing body may determine," and then it follows, "Because a major update will provide a significant net benefit to the city." That's also sort of detailed out in the rest of chapter five, so I felt it was redundant.
Mayor, I guess I have one more. It's, can I bring it forward? Do you want to keep going first?
No, keep, you, you, go ahead.
Or?
Go ahead.
What's your preference?
No, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um... Under the transportation part of this plan...
Well, I gotta explain this.
First, do you want to need a motion first, actually? Before we...
Um, in, in just reviewing this, I, I don't see how this study relates to the adoption of a comprehensive plan.
Why don't you go ahead and explain what you want to do, Tom, first, I guess?
Let me explain this. I kind of, I, I was kind of prepared for that comment. And the situation is that the plan deals with transportation. The city has a rail corridor, and if you look at the past plan and you look at the title, the entire plan, it deals with the rail. It says that the rail will be driven to the east, and that the, I think, one... It says that the rail will be driven to the east, and that the, I think, one part, Dorothy even said something about a rail going to the Expo Center, or going to Epic, or whatever. It's definitely germane to the, to the topic, there's no question about it. And what this reads for the public, is let me read it, it's just very short, and what it says is, "The city shall conduct a study of the Pittsburgh Rail Corridor and the properties of button said corridor to determine the highest and best use of the corridor and possible future development along it, along it. The study shall be completed by the beginning of, or the study shall be completed by the end of 2021 to determine whether the comp plan should be amended to accommodate and encourage development along the rail corridor." The, for the citizens of the city, we continue to pay $225,000 for each rail crossing, and we have no use, we have no business right now with the rail corridor. All I'm saying on this part is, let's look at it in the future. That's, that's all I'm saying. Let's look at it in the future. Let's look at, and how can it not be part of the comp plan? You want to put a side note to it? Fine. But it definitely, the rail corridor's in the comp plan. It's definitely germane to the topic. No question about it. The rail corridor is in the neighborhood plan? It's in the comp plan? It's probably in a whole lot of plans in the city that I've missed. And all I'm saying is, it's about time somebody brings forward a study, or we do something with this rail line, or otherwise, let's take it up. God almighty, I don't want to do that. But no one seems to want to get on board with this rail corridor, or mention it. Now, we had a gentleman tonight, wanted to talk about the safety about it, about one of the crossings. But all this does is, maybe we should look at it in the future. Don't ask me when, that'd be up to the mayor. Future months, I'm fine with that. No one wants to talk about it, and I'm, I'm just kind of shocked, no one wants to even bring it up in reference to this plan as far as the businesses goes, as far as the next step. And all I'm saying is, maybe we should look at it for the future. That's all I'm saying.
Tom, I guess, just the only thing, I guess the biggest concern I have, or looking through that, is we don't have any money in the budget to do a study in 2020, and it says in here to, that should be completed by the beginning of 2021, but there's nothing in the 2020 budget to do that. I would also think you might want to try and do something in coordination with Madison, maybe Oregon, other people along the rail. So I guess that's the big concern, that's something that, maybe in the budget, you can, we can, you can add in, I don't know, maybe I'll put in, maybe not, something to do that study, that money to do that study, because I think, you know, trying to find a way to activate that corridor is a worthy goal, but there's nothing in the budget to do any kind of study for 2020.
With your comments, are you telling me that you would put it in the budget? Are you to put it in your budget?
I am not gonna make that commitment right now. There is a moment process that you can follow.
You opened the door, and I just want to help you shut it. I mean, if you're, if you put it in your budget for next year, and we can look at it, or you want to get back to me, and you, we can, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think that's probably the place for it, whether or not I put it in, that I might decide to put in a building inspector position instead of the study.
I mean, I, I think you're, you just said you're gonna put on both end?
I don't think that's what I said.
Is that what you just said?
But I, I think that's probably the, the place to do that, because I think activating that corridor is something that needs to be done, because it's being underutilized, but that's, that seems like that's, we, because there's no money right now, anyway, but, anyway.
I think you understand why I brought it up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, let's, I'll hear from somebody else.
So I, what I want to mention is, we mentioned about this corridor in chapter three, A16, in policy 3.6, 3.61, 3.62, we talk about this corridor, so this is what I am surprised to, to look for, you know, to do on a study, because it's mentioned here in the comprehensive plan, it was mentioned in the first comprehensive plan, it mentioned in this one. So, and my, my, I am very surprised to see the sponsor is Barr, because you're always against a study and paying consultants, so I'm very surprised to see your name here. But the other thing I want to, that I, I agree with the mayor, is that if we, I think the city is, you know, it would be great to have this rail, the corridor working, but with, you know, it's not only, we need to have partnership with the city of Oregon, Madison, and then counting, and also with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, because, you know, the city doesn't have any power to say, let's open the rail roll, and the train can move people from one place to another one. This is more like a partnership, and why the city of Fitchwood is gonna pay for a study that the other municipality are gonna enjoy, so this is what I say, we need to, we need to work with the others municipality and say, let's work together and determine, this is because if we are, if we are, if we're going as a group of municipality, we have more power than if the city of Fitchwood going along to talking to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, the, uh, Transportation. But if we work as a team and partner with the other municipality and say, there is a need, we want to do this study, how we can make this happen, you know, I think we're gonna have more power if we go as a group, than if we go as, we Fitchwood, and I am concerned why we're gonna pay for this study, that is gonna benefit other municipalities too. It should be like a coordination with the other agencies, so, that one in my, and that, regarding, so that one is my concern with all of this. I think that this is not the place to put it, I agree with the mayor, it should be in the budget, you can bring it to the budget, maybe from now to budget time, you, Tom, can talk to the other municipality and form a coalition to determine how we can work together and doing a study of the corridor, but I don't think that, we are, it's already in the plan, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we have it, the language is here, so, you know, I don't think that this is the, the place to do this.
Dan, you'd like to do some studies now?
Yeah, oh, I love studies and consultants. No, very good points, Julia, but what I'll say is, is my vision for this in, in, in talking with Tom, was not to hire anyone, and certainly not to hire any consultants or spend any money, but rather to establish a committee to generate ideas and, and public feedback regarding this corridor, which I think has great potential, because it runs parallel to County MM and Highway 14, is in a high-growth area, and so, that, that was, and some of the things you talked about, Julia, could be discussed within that committee of perhaps citizens, maybe an older, or however you want to configure it, but the staff person, we could do that in a cost-efficient manner, that's sort of my idea, my reason for signing on to this, but, but you are right, I, I'm not crazy about, you know, we have to, of course, sometimes do studies and have consultants, but I like to have that limited to, you know, more tangible things if we can.
Sonia, do you want to speak?
Sure. I just, I'm struggling a little bit to understand the purpose of the study, so I just wanted to provide two different contexts. First, if we're talking about comprehensive land use planning and the actual land use of parcels abutting the corridor, I just wanted to remind you that our 2009 future urban development area modeling was based on the rail corridor as one central tenant of identifying where development would be appropriate for the city. So, in the FUDAs, that includes the McGaw neighborhood and the Greenfield neighborhood, as well as East Highway 14, a study area in the southeast neighborhood. So this is on page four dash ten of the comp plan. So if the, the purpose of the study is to explore other land uses other than those FUDAs already identified, to me, that sounds like opening up a major update to the comprehensive plan, which I would have concerns about by the end of 2021. If the purpose of the study is really to, you know, from a transit perspective, activate rail, that should be perhaps clarified, because that would, you know, have a different implication.
Dorothy?
And I'm liking the idea of putting a committee together, but I think it should involve people from Oregon, people from Madison, it ought to involve the MPO, the Regional Transit Group that is able to be available. I think there's a lot of people in the area that would be extremely interested in this discussion. Rail line, and, and I, I, we just voted to add my language, that it runs past the Orion Energy Center and Monona Terrace. I don't think it mentioned in my part that it goes up potentially to the airport as a tourist, main tourist line, and then we start talking about building hotels on the rail line to the south. All kinds of tremendous opportunities in taking advantage of the rail line that we have. I think it's bigger than just a Pittsburgh conversation.
Well, I had Mad Rep might be another one to include.
Yep, absolutely. Probably the sports folks also, because I know they were talking a sports facility along that area as well.
Yeah, Dan?
Just comment, you know, I agree with a lot of your sentiment out there about involving other communities, it's, it's, it's great stuff. I would just say, we just wanted to throw this idea out there, that we just start idea generating on this corridor, you know, that's it. I didn't say hire consultants or anything like that, or, you know, pay for, for, I didn't say that. So, I just want, and I, and I didn't say don't include other communities, and you want to include whoever. I mean, it's great, and I think it's just something to get kickstarted on, on some ideas for this corridor. That's it. So, that's, that's where we're at, but, you know, no, no anything further.
And, do you want to go?
You see how the first few words of this paragraph just got this thing going? And all I said was, "Shall conduct a study." The other communities, absolutely. One thing you have to remember, at least I think so, there are communities in Dane County in the state of Wisconsin that would give their left teeth to have a rail line. And here we sit on it, and it just is like, oh, that's nice for Oregon. You talk about money, let me help you out a little bit on that, from my past. Every railroad crossing we put up in this city is $225,000 to keep our citizens safe. So if we want to put a crossing at Irish Lane, gates and lights, we don't have it. Burn Road down there, we don't have it. The other crossings, I believe we already, we already have gates and lights. We're adding money to keep people safe, and yet we're not exploring it further. When I hear Oregon, when I hear, you've heard me say this, when I hear Oregon, when I hear Madison, when I hear Dane County, bring them on. I'm fine with it. No problem. For those of you who don't know, this rail line goes to Chicago. The rail line goes to Chicago. Why isn't the mayor of Madison here, or the governor? Because there's your line to Chicago, right there. It's right here in Pittsburgh, going to Chicago. And when I talked to Dan about it, we did have a consensus, it was just to get the ball moving, maybe to think about it. I agree, Mayor, I, I can give the, we can talk about it for the budget, I'm okay with that, but you can see what I'm trying to achieve here.
Yeah, great. Okay. Sure.
My last part. Tom, you know, I, you know, we are not saying that this is a good idea, that we have this rail roll open, but it, what I want to understand, if we, we as, we, as a feature, we don't have that power to do, you know? You know, we are not the one to say, we are gonna open the rail roll and put like, you know, you know, it, this, it's their agency that they have the control of that, you know? So it's gonna be great to do it, this is what I say, we need to partner with the other ones, you know, and make a coalition if we want this to happen, you know? And that's it. You know, this is all, I don't, this is what, is, is great, the idea is great, yes, but we need to be realistic that we don't have that power to make it happen alone, you know what I mean? So, as a city, we need to have a coalition, and, and work, and work with the other agents in the municipality to determine if we can, you know, if, if we can make this happen, you know? That's it.
All right. Move forward, Dorothy?
Just as a real quick, I don't know who's aware of it, but the land that the Oregon school has now had been owned by the DOT. They had slated a park and ride lot to be there, along with a salt shed. They sold it apparently to Oregon, which kind of surprised me, and I had to let MPO know that that was no longer on DOT's list. DOT may be looking for other land for that park and ride in Salt Shed.
All right. Anything else for the overall comp plan? We've approved a number of, oh, Janelle?
I've got two, just for clarification. So, number two, if I am understanding...
Number two where?
Um, number two regarding Oregon School District, and it goes on to say...
Are you talking about Jay's thing? Okay.
Yep, yep. So just to make sure I understand that, I think what we're saying here is that Jay's kind of identified that we've got this potential parcel of land, that, for example, Oregon would have 107 acres, but there's a subset of that that would actually be developed for the purpose of the school, that staff's response is that we don't need additional language around that, because we have already accomplished that based on language previously found in this plan. Does that sound right?
Yes, I can elaborate, if you'd like. Unfortunately, we, we just can't, I think, per the resident's suggestion, make a decision on limiting 107 acres to 20. I mean, we haven't heard from the Oregon School District or at all on what, how much acreage would actually be needed. And instead of limiting them through this language amendment, we would be reviewing that through an urban service area application, followed by the entitlement process that we would usually follow for rezoning and site plan approval. So having the 107 acres designated on the future land use map as institutional doesn't require that we eventually approve development for the full 107 acres, but I just don't think we have any information really to base a limitation upon.
And we don't know which acres they would want to build the school on, anyway.
So when that comes forward, we could deal with that as a discrete issue based on the request and our discussion and discovery at that point in time.
That's correct.
Okay. My second one would be number three. Nope, I stand down. I'm good.
Tom?
Sonia, before I forget to tell you, thanks for the work on the plan. I, even when I came to your office, I didn't get free coffee or donuts or anything.
Sorry.
Okay. No. In reference to this statement, it is recommended that the major updates occur no more frequently than once every five years.
Number seven?
Is there, what I, my comment's gonna be, I just don't want to straitjacket the city. We talked about this, is there flexibility in that? Is there, just explain that to me, maybe a little bit.
Sure. Well, just in terms of straitjacketing the city, this doesn't tie anybody's hands, we have covered that before, that one council doesn't have the authority to tie a future council's hands in terms of how frequently they may update the plan. So this just provides some guideline, no more frequently than once every five years. State statute is once at least every 10 years, and then it's sort of further elaborated upon in chapter five, the implementation chapter, and it explains that a major update might be triggered by certain land use necessities, such as running out of developable land within the urban service area, or a major shift in economic, political, or social conditions. So you might reasonably expect that those things wouldn't happen more frequently than once every five years, and in reviewing that decision, you balance other factors, such as how much it costs to do a major update process on city taxpayers, and whether there's a need, and things like that. So, a future council could update it every year, if you thought that was necessary and worth the taxpayer funds to go towards that sort of process.
Where I'm going with it was, if a major developer came to the city and there was 300 jobs, and I don't want staff or who... staff or whoever, whoever, say, wait a minute, we can't do that because we don't, we don't upgrade, we don't change this, which is no more frequently than once every five years. Well, it's pretty hard to swallow that pill when there's 300 jobs and a great employer, and they come to the city, and I don't think what I'm saying happens. We can change it. Future councils, future mayor, am I thinking right?
Right. There's nothing in the comprehensive plan that precludes the council from considering such a decision, such an amendment. But the language that's included tries to encourage a comprehensive decision that's best for the city overall, rather than focusing on something that might benefit an individual property owner that wants to sell for development value, for example, or things like that. So it really tries to encourage a whole comprehensive view from a land use perspective.
To me, the key word is recommended. If Amazon decides they want to build a second headquarters along Highway, um, all right, let's open up.
District four, yeah, that'd be good.
It's a pretty good district out here.
Yeah.
Janelle? Oh, okay.
And we already give it power to the council to do whatever they want, so.
All right, Janelle?
Uh, one more. So question number five. Can you walk me through, oh, wait till we get there. So if we have for discussion sake, 10 acre parcel, and let's say an acre and a half of that is wetlands, and we've established some level of zoning for density, how does that developer know how many units can be put into that parcel? How does that math work?
So the gross density would be the full acreage before we subtract any of those areas that are limited for development. So wetlands, wetland buffers, areas dedicated to right-of-way, areas dedicated to the public for parks. All of those in the gross density metric are included, and it makes the denominator of the land bigger. Therefore, the, the density metric would be less. Whereas under net density, we're subtracting all of those things from the denominator. So we're removing the wetland because it can't be developed, we're removing the park area because it can't be developed. So therefore, the area is less, and you have the same amount of units over that less acreage, so the net density number is going to be higher. The request is to make a decision one way or the other and provide some more specificity in the plan. That's what this resident comment is looking for. To define, for example, that the council's going to forever use net density as the metric to define whether a zoning decision is consistent with the plan or not. So my recommendation and my response was, it might not be wise to tie our hands in that regard because we don't always know at a high-level planning process what those limitations might be. For example, a wetland might not be delineated yet, so we don't know whether it exists or not. We also don't know the exact right-of-way percentage or parkland area, and whether those would be dedicated to the public or held in private ownership, and that can change how the calculation looks as well. So in terms of the flexibility that had been requested throughout this process by the public, as well as a lot of the elected officials, rather than further tying our hands with that sort of really quantitative regulation within a policy document, my recommendation was to leave it as is currently, so that the plan commission and council can determine whether or not that density character is consistent with the plan overall.
I know one thing that, one instance where I know this maybe could have come up is in Swan Creek. I believe on one side of where, because there actually is a creek there, on one side of the road, the DNR designated as navigable. On the other side of the road, it's not navigable, and that dictates like what you can do and not do, and there wouldn't have been no way of knowing that in the neighborhood planning process. But through that, then you kind of go, oh, well, this is a bigger deal or not as big a deal as we thought. So hopefully, the neighborhood planning process also takes some of that in consideration where, oh, we know there's a lot of wetlands here. We want to keep that, this area designated lower density so that you don't have 100 parcels on an acre or something like that, because everything else is wetland. So hopefully, that, my expectation would be the neighborhood planning process would take that in consideration as well.
So my one example would be if we took a look at the Veridian project. I think that we had some confusion on that particular project where we had certain wetlands in place, and if we, if we looked at, from a developer's perspective, they were considering a gross yield in their density. The neighbors who looked at it were considering less than that, because they were saying there are certain wetlands. How do we make sure that we don't have a misunderstanding between a developer's perspective when they purchase that parcel and what the neighbors would be assuming based on existing wetlands?
So further, just using that exact example in practice, the discussion at plan commission and at council, as well as the staff report for that project, identified what the gross density was, as well as what the net density would be after removing those various undevelopable areas, and the result was somewhere in between. So while it was well under the gross density, it was a little bit over the net density. Ultimately, the plan commission in looking at the goals of the comp plan overall, such as affordable, single-family owner occupied housing, they felt that in balance, the zoning was still consistent because it furthered the overall goals of the comprehensive plan rather than contradicted. So if in that example, we had a very specific requirement that the developer follow net density, and they were over by a couple of units, that could have put us into a position where we have this regulatory, regulatory policy document that now we aren't nimble enough to amend. But it was still a project that overall the city valued.
I think the other thing we talked about is that you also run the risk of developers gaming the system, you know, oh, I want this many, I'm not going to put maybe as much parkland in, because parkland gets removed. And so then all of a sudden, your net density goes down because you don't have any parkland, which we want, you know? So I think that's the other concern is people gaming the system a little bit to say, oh, I want 120 units, I'm at 110. Oh, there goes that park, or there's, there goes that amenity that the neighborhood probably wants. So that's, I know that's another concern as well. You have more, Janelle?
Not at this point.
All right. Anything else on the overall plan? All right, I'm seeing nothing else, so that means we can go to, I'm going to ask for a roll call, approval of the overall update to the 2020 comprehensive plan. And so, yes, what would be for the, the whole thing now? We've got no more motions on the table or anything like that? Yes is approve it, let's go forward, and no is we don't want to, we don't like it, and we need five out of the seven people to here today to say yes.
Alder Rodafrada?
Yes.
Alder Barr?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Crowsey?
Yes.
Alder Rice?
Yes.
Alder Schroeder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
Well, thank you very much to all of you, to all the public who's been so involved and engaged, but especially to Sonia and your staff for the many, many hours. We asked a lot of you and your staff, and you came through above and beyond, I think, what we could have expected and wanted, so thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
All right. We're not, there's not much that's going to take very long, Dan.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
All right, part of Public Works, number one.
Let me go back to the agenda, give me... Sorry.
Draft annual report, what's this? There's not a motion or anything for this. Is this just sharing the annual report?
Yeah, this...
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, this, I can explain here, or Mike can explain. This is just an annual report that we're required to share per the DNR, and if you have any questions, Mike's here.
All right. Any questions on the storm sewer annual report for Mike? Great job, Mike.
You can stay up there, you're coming up again soon.
All right. Do you want to speak to anything?
Yeah, can you say?
It's not required to be approved, but it's required to be submitted to you guys for comment and review. There's six sections in it that were required to, it's to try to, you know, improve storm water quality. And if you look at the report, there's a section that is the DNR fill-in part. I would suggest to go to the appendixes, because that's our summary, which is a lot easier to follow. So that's what I would look at if I was you. I'd look, start at appendix A through appendix D. That's our summary, which is a little more readable.
Sarah, did you have?
No, I just wanted to ask if there was something in particular we were supposed to look at, because it was, it kind, it was a lot of information that, thank you, I'll look at that.
Yeah, it's, it's just all the information, what we're doing to be in compliance with our permit.
Dorothy?
The one question that I want to ask, only somewhat related to that, I got a postcard saying that MMSD is going to be doing a project that's going to rip up Cannonball around Dunn's Marsh down to McKee Road. What, how is the city involved in that?
They've involved us a little bit with some initial discussions. They don't have their plans finalized. I think they're just out for public input at this point. Part of that is, that is our right-of-way, so they have to get permission. They have an interceptor sewer in that location, and they're going to be replacing that. So we'll be monitoring that, and they will have public, I think that's what your postcard probably was, wasn't it, a public meeting?
I think so.
An informational meeting, yes.
Talking about 21 for a project.
Yeah, so they're just in the very early stages getting public comment at this point, and, and they've reached out to us just for some very, very initial response. So we'll, we'll be involved as that moves forward.
And do I remember March 18th or 19th or something for a public meeting?
I think that's right. I don't know off the top of my head the exact date.
Okay. Well, council, council people might want to be aware of that particularly, people interested in biking.
I'll look it up and report back.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions on the annual report? All right, thank you, Mike, for that. Dan, do you want to do the next resolution here?
Yeah, we'll do a motion to approve Resolution R 33-20 of the purchase of a Ford F-550 cabin chassis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve?
They did.
All right, you want to speak to this, Dan?
So we are purchasing a Ford F-550 and a chassis, and it's been budgeted, and so we're going to go forward with that. It's already been approved in the budget process.
Okay. Any questions? All right, oh, Dorothy?
And cap and chassis means we're going to reuse the box or whatever that's on it?
That'll be a separate bid that we will be bringing to you guys for the equipment, the box, the plow, the salter, the sander. That'll be a separate, separate bid.
Part one of a big purchase.
This is part one of a big purchase, correct.
All right, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
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 You have posed name. All right, that's approved. Next, Dan?
Motion to approve Resolution R 37-20 authorizing the purchase of a 2021 International HV607 SBA tandem chassis.
Second.
All right, did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve?
They did.
All right, you want to speak to this, or Mike?
Well, we're purchasing the tandem chassis, also were budgeted in the budget process.
What is that? What is a tandem chassis?
Yeah, Mike, what's it?
Talk about the specifics?
What, this is, so this is a plow truck replacement. The only thing we're asking for in addition is we're going to keep the truck as a spare. This winter, we had a breakdown a couple times, and it really shorts us. And we did get like 42,000 in trade for the last one instead of 22, which was budgeted, so that should supplement that, that we're going to keep this one as a spare.
Good. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose name. All right, that is approved as well. Anything else on Public Works, Dan? All right, what about Parks Commission?
So just an update for our last parks meeting. We did meet on March 5th. We talked about how for the Burnwood Park Shelter, we are moving forward with building a swallow home that will erect this year, and then next year will close up kind of where they're currently nesting. So ideally, it'll make the shelter more usable, but still provide a home for the valuable swallow birds that do a great job of cleaning up mosquitoes. We also reviewed the Taravessa proposed park plan, so that was very interesting if anyone wants to look at. We provide, or we had an update from the Rec Division to kind of get an overview of the success that they provide from providing community outreach programs. And we reviewed South Johnson Park equipment and made a selection based on what the neighborhood feedback was, that the most popular park we'll be moving forward with, and we also reviewed mowing median proposals, so.
All right, thank you. You have time?
Sorry, I had a question on that I didn't catch yet. I've had two or three calls about the neighbors up there. It's in my district.
Yeah.
Has to do with wanting to use the park, and the birds are obviously leaving droppings in the tables around them. What did you say that's going to, I heard you say about the, I heard you say about the birdhouses or whatever, but when is it going to be shut down or shut off?
Next year. The, so the birds, kind of with some park members doing research, it was kind of discovered that the birds like to scout out new locations. So this year, they'll have the new birdhouse erected for them, and they hopefully kind of identify it, and then next year, when they come, the shelter will be closed off. They won't be able, the ceiling will be, so the birds won't be able to access that area. But then we won't lose the bird habitat, because they've already scouted out this home and know that they can just kind of transition their home to there. So it really was kind of a compromise of, yes, there'll be another summer where the birds will be building their homes within the shelter, but the swallows do provide a really valuable resource of cleaning up some mosquitoes. So next year, the roof will be taken care of where they won't be able to nest. This year, there'll be a home, and it's being done by volunteers, that it's a really awesome project.
Did you have any residents show up at the meeting?
We did. We had one resident show up at the meeting.
The neighborhood, I'm just going to the neighborhood now. Do you know if, just for future thought, as far as Burnland up there, Wildwood South, maybe you could have Scott, if you just pass on to him maybe, to tell the neighborhood association to put out a little note on that, or maybe the city's going to do it?
And I do think the neighborhood associations were kind of, they did, we did reach out to the neighborhood associations. I know one of our commission members is on the Wildwood Neighborhood Association, so there was some interaction that I, but yeah, so. But thank you for the feedback. I can talk to Scott about that, too.
All right, thank you. Labor Board, anyone's gone? Commission, EGMO?
We'll be meeting on Thursday morning.
All right, RCC?
We meet March 16th.
All right, Transportation and Trans, Dan, you can read that. No report? All right.
I would just make one comment.
Okay, there is a report.
There is a public hearing on the Fish Hattery Road North Corridor project on Thursday at 5 o'clock, 5:30.
5:30.
5:30. So attend.
Excellent. All right, Sita?
No report.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs?
So two things, that meeting is at the Wyndham in the Ballroom for anybody that's interested in that. Ag and Rural Affairs, I think we have a meeting coming up on the 17th, don't we, Tom? 4:00 PM.
All right, EMS?
No report.
Oh, sorry. All right, Bicycle Committee?
Oh, no report.
All right, Tree Advisory?
We'll also be meeting on Thursday at 4:00.
All right, Landmarks Preservation? All right, Census Complete Count Committee, Dorothy?
Okay, this is where, and I'm going to add healthy neighborhoods to the list also by the time we're done. We had a real nice meeting on, when was it? The 26th of February. Came up with a whole list of things that various people will be doing. You may have seen on agendas that have come through and on the email list, the notify me lists, all have a note on the bottom reminding people about the census coming up. So there's a whole list of things that the city will be doing, hopefully to help people be aware of the census and to encourage them. We will have particularly, the low-income communities of color are hard to touch, Spanish-speaking communities are hard to touch, them particularly because they're kind of afraid of government to begin with. Seniors surprisingly are hard to touch. So a lot of, a lot of people will just automatically do it quick, but there's going to be a whole lot of people that we're going to have to make effort to reach out to. People will be getting postcards, an invitation toward the end of March, asking them to fill out the form online, and then there's a whole process. And then there's a whole process of things that will happen to reach out to people who don't do that. So we're hoping to minimize the need for all of that.
All right.
And then we'll, we'll be meeting again week of the 23rd of March. Time is not, or date time, time is not set yet.
Sure.
So yesterday, we taped another Spanish TV show here. We talked about the census. We gave a lot of information in Spanish. And also, there is going to be in the senior center next Thursday, 10:30 is going to be a meeting to inform people if they have question about the census. And one of the lady, that she's the leader from the census, the United States Census Committee, she's going to be here in the community, in the senior center. They're going to bring their own computers so people can, the people that can, I think that you need to do something in the computer online. So they're going to provide those services. So it's going to be at the senior center next week, so. And we, we promote that, too, so. I don't know if you guys, the city of Pittsburgh, the city of Madison is released a video in, in English and in Spanish to, to promote, you know, to, to educate the public that they need to be counted. So I don't know if we are planning to do something like that with Fact TV. I don't know. Have you talked about that?
In fact, TV is doing a lot with the census. If Madison's done something like that, I don't know if we'll recreate the wheel. We might just ask them if we can borrow it.
Yeah, maybe we can do that because I know that they did one, yeah.
Yeah.
Keep going, Dorothy. You got Healthy Neighborhoods or Housing Advisory?
Housing would be next.
All right.
We had a big meeting yesterday. I am thrilled with the group that's there. Real estate people, people from the state, people from WIDA, property manager, Olivia Perry from the county, builders. Lot of really good brains to scratch to talk about the, the needs for housing throughout the entire city and try and figure out the balances. One thing that they'll be, and they, they've got marching orders as well. One thing they'll be talking about, the possibility of is looking at both the urban service area, the future urban service area, and places outside the urban service area to say, should we do a comp plan update, where a big part of that will be looking at those lines and to see if, because we didn't get a chance to tweak what they thought would be appropriate 10 years ago, we didn't get a chance to look at that this time. So I think that this Housing Commission is, or Housing Committee will probably want the city to take a look at where those lines are and talk about the possibility of tweaking them. We also passed Resolution R 2620 declaring the need for the Dane County Housing Authority to function within the city of Pittsburgh and authorizing the Dane County Housing Authority to operate within the city of Pittsburgh. We did amend that to make sure that they would make the city whole on taxes for any properties that they own that are off the tax roll. So the Dane County Housing will be, part of the agreement will say that they will be paying us some sort of agreement that will be equal to the amount of taxes that they would have been paying if they, if it was on the tax roll. Okay.
And each and I?
And then Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative met on the 4th. We slightly adjusted the recommendation. There were 10 different Badger Prairie Needs Network. We've heard from before, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Catholic Multicultural Center, Dane Arts Mural Program, Girls on the Run, New Bridge, Latino Academy of Workforce Development, Trifor Schools, and Unidas all asked for money totaling well over what was available.
Oh, 88,000.
Okay, so yeah, about 20,000 more than we had available. So staff kind of whittled that down and made their recommendation. The committee changed those recommendations slightly to add back some of what they were recommending not be funded and to take little bits from others. So short, short fund more, more of the programs to be able to give a little bit more money to some that would have, we would have otherwise totally said no to. I think the only, only one that we said, oh, Trifor Schools, we said no to. They'll be not real happy. And Dane Arts Mural Program ended up, the agreement is you can't use more than 20% of the grant for personnel costs. And what they put in was well above that and they were told that that would make it ineligible. And they chose not to make that change. So even though we love what they do, we had to say no because they made themselves ineligible. So that will ultimately be coming to council for final approval. Do we know when it will be on council?
I believe it's on the 24th.
Okay, so we can look forward to that in your packets.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee?
We'll pay some bills quick. For the Finance Committee, everybody was present and the checks are 120511 through 120582. These are dated 216 this year to 229. The total is $268,981.31. The next was the ACH payments. These are dated February of this year, dated $526,747.40. Now, we had two ordinance and resolutions. The first one was Resolution R 3420, 2020 MPSIS Membership Payment of Approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
So by Janelle, do you want to speak to this at all time?
It basically is a computer system where other communities along with Pittsburgh are paying their fair share. And this is an annual thing. It's, or it comes up, I'm not sure, once a year? Twice a year? Once a year?
I think so. Or we authorize it once a year?
Or we authorize it once a year?
Yeah, the authorization's once a year. The payments may be made more often.
That's, that's what it is.
All right, any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, next one?
The last one, and I have a resolution. It's R 36-20, amending the 2020 budget for various funds. This is 2019 carryover, move approval.
Second.
All right, and did Finance approve this one?
Finance approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this?
I'm going to have Pat speak to it just because there's more than one. There is a number of, of carryovers.
Yeah, all the carryovers are listed in the packet. Basically, there are projects that we either didn't get to during the 19 calendar year because of staff, project timing and staff being busy, or there are projects that overlapped multiple years. So you'll see that in there. It should be clear that all of these projects that are on the carryover list have gone through the budget for approvals prior. So all these projects have been approved. It's just a matter of taking that budgeted money and adding it to another year.
I have Patrick. Would you like to come up and speak, please?
Patrick Janney, 5211 Kitty Crest. I ask that you remove and deny funding approval carryover, funding carryover of $75,000 for city water to the Magaw Shelter. This had a budget approval years ago, probably more on speculation of future need. This proposal of many years ago has proven unnecessary as shown by never doing this for as much as 20 years. And even during the complete remodel in 2016 of the Magaw Shelter, the remodel included a new five horsepower submersible pump, well, the well controls for that, a new pressure tank, along with all new piping and new fixtures and drinking fountains on the shelter. And I would suggest you ask how much was spent on that. It's an all-new well equipment system and it's heavy duty compared to any residential service like mine. All of this investment would be scrapped, no use for it, to change to a city water main. The nitrate level limits in water are based on residential continual daily consumption. No one lives in a city park. It's not their everyday water source. This paper right here, advisory page, is all that's needed according to the DNR. If this ever does need attention at some future time, a reverse osmosis system reviews 80%, 90%, even as much as 99% of nitrates and other elements. An appropriate proposal could be considered for many thousands of dollars less at the right time. Reverse osmosis units are sometimes $180. I looked up two of them this afternoon and others are around $1,000 with annual filters at about $100 a year. Going to city water at $75,000 starts water utility fees for every gallon that has to go through the meter and requires frequent flushing of a dead-end water line. This advisory page is all that's needed currently. Much better solutions are available than going to city water. The council, this council knows when park funds run low, projects are put on the levy. That's our property tax. We just heard last Thursday at our Park Commission meeting that the park fees fund is only $810,000 and $400,000 of that is already allocated. So spend wisely, judiciously, and with justification and not on proposals like this. I spoke with former alder Tony Hartman yesterday. He has a reverse osmosis system at his home on his well. And I was hoping that he was going to be able to attend here. When Tony was still on the council, you might remember, that he spoke in favor of a reverse osmosis system at the same time that I did at a previous council meeting. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Patrick.
On the park?
It's one of the projects that were carried over. Magaw Park, bringing city water to Magaw Park Shelter.
Connection to the city water?
Yeah.
That one? Okay.
Dorothy?
So are there, in addition to that, are there other things in this list that probably will not happen?
No, well, the plan is, staff's plan is for this to happen. I mean, it was in the budget. It's been vetted through various committees. We plan on moving this forward. This also will be looped to the new part of the park, Magaw Park, where the Fahy development connects. But no, all of these items that we're requesting to be carried over to 20, from 2019 to 2020, we expect at least to start in 2020.
Okay.
There's none in here that we're not planning on doing.
And then none, none of this becomes part of next year's budget discussion, correct?
That's correct. Yep. It's 20, it's already, it would be 2020's budget amended.
And if we decide to remove that, then does that money become available in next year's budget discussion?
It would be available in the park fees for the community parks.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Julia?
So I have a question regarding that. What, so I want to understand what Patrick mentioned is, it has some logic, you know, that, you know what I mean, that we can, we don't need this. I want to understand, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, it's, it's a matter of opinion. We have engineers and we have the DNR stating that we should have city water. We have, it's the safest option for the city. It's in proximity. We need it for other areas of the park. So staff's recommendation through the Water Utility, Tracy Foss, our Public Works Director, and the DNR is to hook up to city water.
Can I mention something about that?
Uh, nope.
Part in the parks, does the city water need to be hooked up to that you just mentioned?
It'll, it'll go to the new area of the park that was dedicated with the Fahy Fields development. That would be on the, my directions here, that'd be on the west side of the entry road. So there'll be new amenities put over there that will require water.
Yeah, Julia?
So, so all the parks in the city, they are connected to the, to the city water main?
Oh, not, not all the parks. There's other, there's some rural parks that don't have. Yeah, they don't, they don't have, they might have well water. But since this park is connected to the urban service area, all of our parks within the urban service area are or will be connected to city water.
Dorothy?
So would this be run from the new Fahy Fields or would it come down from Lacey?
It actually, it's stubbed in near, near the entry road and then it would extend back to the, through the parking lot to the shelter. The, the plans, maybe Mike could speak to exactly where they'll run, they'll run, but I don't have the plans in front of me.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit. So they would go from the existing stub. And then also, what we're looking at is how we're going to develop the Fahy addition and where we might need water. And that would be where the loop would connect to that stub and then there'd be a service off of that for that shelter. So it'd really shorten that service as far as the length, so it wouldn't be a long dead end, which is a concern. And then we'd have that whole system would be looped, which would definitely improve the water quality to the system. So that's, that's the intent. It's kind of a little bit in flux because we're trying to determine what we're going to do with the Fahy development and, you know, the potential there. But we're trying to coordinate those so that we put in such a place that we'll be using it for, for multiple uses.
And to clarify, the looping helps the whole system, not just Magaw Park. That's the whole system.
Correct, the whole system so that we don't end up with a stagnant water source where then more flushing is required and it just keeps water moving through the system.
And is sewer involved somehow or another as well?
Sewer is not at this time. It, it, we'll be looking at it, though, with the potential for the addition of maybe a bathroom facility at some point in time. And that would probably be on the Fahy side, but I'm, that's really early on, so.
Sarah?
I just wanted to reiterate what Pat said. I do think Patrick has a lot of logic from like a, from a cost savings perspective, but just looking at the staff recommendation of water quality, that that's, Patrick did bring up this concern several times in the Parks Commission that we have talked about it. And it's been said as to how it has logic and, and saving money is important to everyone, but it is just kind of the, following the staff recommendation of the water quality.
Tom, did you?
Sarah, do you think this should be looked at again at Parks if it passed? All I'm saying is if we pass this, I'd like to see you go back to Parks so you folks have another look at it.
So we did, we did, this was on our agenda last week to move forward with carrying over the budget items. So we did talk about this last week and we heard Patrick's concern and we did move forward with passing the items to roll over the budget.
It wasn't a voting item.
Other question?
Communication.
Patrick is correct. It was a communication item and that he did voice his concern. He is correct. It was not a voting item. So, yeah, if, fair point. I apologize.
Anything else? See nothing else? All in favor of approving the Resolution R 3620, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed name that passes? Personnel Committee?
What?
Personnel?
We are meeting next week.
All right, Public Safety?
Two items. We missed Anne and just as an FYI, the library is hosting an event on Saturday, April 18th, Books and Brews, supporting a story walk. And the Cotton Tail Classic will occur on Saturday, April 11th with a portion supporting the Trifor Schools.
All right, thank you. And, Dan? And, uh, if Anne's watching, please get better soon, she has ammonia, so hopefully she gets healthy soon for us. Uh, Mayor's Report, couple things. I know this week, staff is meeting more with the City of Madison, um, continuing to figure out town of Madison, what we're gonna do, gain information, sharing information with each other and talking about next steps and how to incorporate our parts of the town of Madison and when that can happen. Otherwise, a bunch of urban cuttings, including this morning at the New Pancake Cafe on North Fish Hatchery Road. And other than that, I know that, uh, the, our emergency management people are just talking about coronavirus, if that becomes an issue here, how to deal with that. They're gonna look to cities like Seattle to see how they're handling it. I think the biggest concern is someone like EMS, if they go and get exposed to someone that has coronavirus and they have to do a fourteen-day quarantine, well, pretty soon we're not gonna have anyone that can staff an ambulance. So how do you do something like that and figure that out if we have any kind of mandatory quarantine? So hopefully that doesn't happen, but I know that they're looking at that and considering that. I know that the county and the City of Madison has come up with some things already too. So hopefully that starts dying off. That's probably not the right choice of words, sorry. All right, uh, all the reports.
I have a question about.
Yeah.
So, um, are you planning to do, uh, send to the, uh, the council, uh, you know, like a update, so what we are, what we are doing because, you know, um, you know, I, I would like to know what is the city doing, preparing, you know, what is the plan, you know what I mean? So, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd be happy if you, you wanna, uh, call me now or, or, you know, we could meet, I can give you an update for, um, I think we need a few more joint meetings with the City of Madison and then we'd be prepared to give a council presentation.
So do you know when you're gonna?
I, I don't. It would be probably a couple months out. We could provide more of an update of where we're at and what are some of the objectives.
Might be a good committee of the whole topic in, you know, June or something like that.
Yeah, we could probably do that maybe, um, in the summer.
Yeah, because, you know, this thing is coming in less than two year now and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where we're working on it.
Yeah, but I would like to know more about what we are working, okay.
All right, uh, Dorothy, all the reports?
Okay, kind of for more than just my district, but, um, Verona Road and McKee Road work is starting up, um, under the Verona Road Bridge from Fitz, Fitzroona Road all the way through the Seminole Interchange is gonna be completely tore up between DOT and City of Fitchburg Projects. It's not going to be a good alternative to Fish Hatchery Road. So there's going to be all kinds of craziness going on. In addition to that, this morning I sent council and city officials a note suggesting, talking about the coronavirus, that we try to do all we can to get people, uh, to vote early, um, among other things, so that we don't run out of election officials before Election Day comes around. I, I would like to limit exposure of our residents as they vote as much as possible. Um, after I sent that, I started thinking about the fact that we have, the library is open until nine o'clock every night. I would like staff to talk about the possibility of having a clerk at the library from the time City Hall closes to six-thirty, seven o'clock, something more reasonable. I don't think most people that work during the day can possibly get here to vote early, um, by four-thirty in the afternoon. I would like to find a way to extend the hours that we have early voting available. I'd suggest it in there again, I, I would still love and in the future want to push for better voting options for the people that live over on my end of town. Because people that live over there, work up in Madison, are not going to drive all the way over here to go out, that far out of their way to vote early. So we, we need better options all around, but for this, probably even this year, because I don't think coronavirus is going to go away before the end of the year, I would like to extend voting hours. We can use the library, we could keep City Hall open, it's open right now because we still have meetings. But I, I would like to very seriously talk about extending early voting hours at, for Fitchburg between now and the election. And if we need to do some kind of budget amendment, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, it would require a budget amendment and, um, uh, we can talk, you know, if you wanna give me a call or drop in, I'd be happy to talk to you.
And that does remind me, I meant to mention that next week, early voting starts for the spring elections, so feel free to stop in during regular early voting hours as of now, starting next week Monday.
Yeah, and can I just put in a plug that there is absentee voting is available by mail as well, so.
All right, anything else, Dorothy?
That's it.
All right, Julia?
Yeah, so I want to mention what, um, some of you already mentioned about the North Fish Hatchery Road reconstruction meeting on March twelfth, five-thirty to seven-thirty in the Winterham Garden Hotel, um, corner of PD and Fish Hatchery Road. So everyone, uh, I, I know that my neighbors and some people that I have talked this weekend are very, um, concerned about what is gonna happen with Fish Hatchery and McKee. Um, so I invite everyone that is watching that, you know, um, you have an opportunity to come to this public meeting and, you know, and talk, uh, and be informed, you know, it's gonna be a, a hard summer for all of us, but, you know, the city's growing and we need to update our infrastructure, so.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Julia's comments about the, the meeting on Thursday night, five-thirty. I'm sure many of you will be there, um, so it'll be a good discussion.
All right, Sarah?
Just two call-outs. The Sunnyside Dog Park is unfortunately closed, um, until further notice due to wet conditions. So I know it's a popular dog park, just as an FYI. And then a reminder that the speed limits, I've been seeing the signs that the speed limits on sign, uh, have gone down. So pay, just a friendly call-out to look at the reduced speeds. That's it.
All right, Shannon. All right, Tom?
Um, the next, I'm gonna expand on, uh, Janelle's Zagan Rule Affairs. It has to do with, uh, the next meeting is the seventeenth of March. It's at four o'clock and it's at the Durfer Farm. And it, what they do is once a year, go into the rural area in my district and talk to the farmers who's ever available that comes out and, um, actually they have the meeting first, uh, make sure I get this right. They have the meeting first, city officials, it's usually short, and then they depart and then the candidates, whoever would be running at that time, are welcome to come. They'd like to come and say a few words along with the mayor. And we've done it the last couple of years, it's been going on. And people wonder about the Durfer Farm. I wanna clarify that, it's at Fitzroona and Whalen. Um, it's just over the street, over the other side of the street, but there are a lot of Durfers that live in Fitchburg.
Janelle?
I've got a couple of quick ones, especially given what we're hearing on the coronavirus. Again, I would highly recommend that our seniors consider absentee voting. It gives them an opportunity to participate and have their voice in the process. And yet I see a ton of content right now suggesting to minimize group contact wherever you can, so that covers both of those areas. Uh, speed limit, as we've heard before, thank you for getting that message out, getting those signs up so, um, so our neighbors can start getting used to this, this change. You know, you kinda get autopilot, so having that little flashing sign is a good reminder that, uh, that we need to start making some changes into that space. And I also see it's, I mean, it's hitting my news feed, uh, so whoever's doing our social media behind that, it's hitting, it's hitting that spot as well. So that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. All right, unfinished business, is now finished business, so we can remove that in the future, please. Thank you all.
Can I make a quick?
Yeah.
Wanted to mention, um, Chamber of Commerce, Business Before Nine, um, for people who haven't made decisions on, um, the alder candidates. Um, the last Business Before Nine had a forum of candidates which was recorded by Fact TV and we really appreciate them doing that. Um, that is available online for people to, uh, see what the alders had to say.
All right, going on to new business, uh, Dan, for Public Works, do you wanna do these motions?
We'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-45-20, a resolution approving an agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to install monitoring wells related to the Fish Hatchery Road construction. And the Board of Public Works did approve.
Is there a second?
Did Finance?
Second.
All right, and Public Works and Finance both approved. Uh, Mike, you wanna speak to this?
Sure, this is, um, an agreement that the DNR came up with, uh, for us, instead of a, actually us paying for the easements that are required for the, uh, Fish Hatchery Road construction. In lieu of that, they want five, just ten-foot-deep monitoring wells, um, just to see what the water's doing and, and how construction might impact that. And it's basically because that, that Fish Hatchery is, you know, very dependent on their water, it's an Artesian well system, so, so that's what they want. The cost of the wells is about, I think, sixty-five-hundred. The value of the land, if we would've paid for it, was about eighty-one-hundred, so a net benefit to us. I think it's a good, good thing moving forward and, and they've been a, a great neighbor and it's a great asset for the City of Fitchburg too.
And I believe April first, construction starts?
April first is the targeted construction date. And why this got direct referred is now the weather's really warm, but we wanted to better do it while, maybe we have some ground frozen because of the Oak Savannah is where these wells are going and we don't wanna have compaction over the root system, so we wanted to do it on frozen ground, hopefully.
All right, Julia?
Yeah, I, you know, I talked to Mike this afternoon, so, um, it was interesting because you were explaining how many wells are there?
There's five and they're ten-foot-deep each.
Yeah, so.
Is all, and we'll probably, when we're in that neighborhood, we'll probably look at them once a week at the most.
Great. Other questions? Dorothy?
And I watched it on Public Works and you said that they get removed at the end of construction?
Correct, unless the DNR would like to keep them for their own monitoring purposes, which we might entertain a, a separate agreement for them to maintain them and be responsible for them at that point in time, 'cause they would be on their property. So we could do that, otherwise we're responsible to remove them and properly abandon them.
For curiosity, how, so this is like an equipment that you have in each?
It's just, yeah, it'll just be like a, an eight-inch, you know, casing in the ground, basically, and we'll just be monitoring groundwater levels for the most part.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, anything else? All right, see you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Uh, Dana, wanna do this one too?
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-44-20, a resolution authorizing payment for partial twenty-seven Pike Drive right of way.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so by Tom, did Public Works approve?
Both, uh, the Board of Public Works and Finance did approve. There is a closed session required, um, because some of the numbers are sensitive, so.
All right, yeah, why don't you go ahead and read that?
We're gonna make a motion for closed session. A motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen-point-eight-five-one-E, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, um, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will hopefully be back soon. All right, is there a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion to reconvene into open session.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session and I don't think there's any further discussion on the resolution that's on the table. So all in favor of approving Resolution R-44-20, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Thank you, Mike, thanks for hanging out with us so late.
Thanks, Mike.
Next council meeting is in two weeks, next committee, the whole meeting is in April. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? I didn't think so. All right, goodnight, everyone.